All right, I'd like to call this meeting of the Sacramento City Council to order. Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Carr, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Chenier, and Vice Mayor Hanson.
Here.
And for the record, I do expect Councilmember Guerra, Councilmember Ashby, and Mayor Steinberg.
Okay, great. We have some special music playing in the background, so please try to ignore that for a second. But we will, I'd like to ask the kids who are here, both from Marina Vista and Alder Grove and Oak Park, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, if you don't mind standing. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a few special presentations that we'll kick off the meeting with. Councilmember Chenier, would you like to do your presentation first?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So, in Oak Park, we have a program called Oak Park Smart. And what that is, is a collaboration where we've been working with 12 of the schools in Oak Park, eight of the elementaries, a few of the middle schools, and three of the high schools. And every year, what we do is honor an extraordinary student from each of the schools. And what they get is an award at a celebration that we do, plus they get their picture up on a banner on Martin Luther King. And we are in our second year of those banners, so we're excited that those will be going up relatively soon. These are wonderful scholars from all of these schools. We're going to bring them up in a minute. We have a very short, two-minute video that we're going to show first from our celebration, and then we'll bring them up, just to do a quick look.
My name is Jay Chenier. I'm a city councilman from District 5, and I represent Oak Park. What we're doing today is our second annual Oak Park Smart, celebrating Oak Park.
Yep, we're working on it.
Hi there, my name is Jay Chenier.
Now, do you mind helping? We might have to go back and...
I'm a city councilman from District 5, and I represent Oak Park. What we're doing today is our second annual Oak Park Smart, Celebrate Oak Park event. And really, the reason for this is to honor so many of the scholars we have at our 12 schools in Oak Park.
So, if I could get all of our young scholars, we don't have all 12 of them here tonight, but we have a number of them. If I could get you all to come up to the microphone real quick here. Maybe just very quickly introduce yourselves and which school you go to. Just your name and your school.
I'm Nevia Williams, and I go to Oak Park Prep.
Oak Park Prep, great.
I'm Amanda Palomino, and I go to PS7 Elementary.
My name's Diego, and I go to Father Keith B. Kenny.
I am Orlando Ruvacab, and I go to Sacramento Charter High School.
Hi, I'm Leom Gasta Nail, and I attend American Legion High School.
Hi, my name is Leandre, and I go to Oak Ridge.
My name is Postwick, and I go to C.A., and I go to Language Academy.
Well, thank you very much, all, for coming. We're going to do a quick picture, if you all want to come down right here into the well.
If you want to come stand in front here, we'll do a photo.
But I also want to recognize, we have a number of principals back there. We have Bret Hart, American Legion, Father Keith B. Kenny, and Ethel Phillips. Can you guys stand up so we can recognize you? These are the principals who are helping make it happen.
And...
You want the principals to come up? Yeah. If you guys can come up, we'll do a picture. And help me congratulate these young people. These are the future of our city here, who are doing great work in their schools.
Come on, principals, don't be shy. But you have to stand behind the kids, so we can see the kids. Kids, why don't you come down? And if there are any parents who want to join?
If there are parents, you're welcome to come up.
Yeah, why don't you slide a little bit to the... Yeah.
Hey! So glad to see you.
Danny.
Oh, she bingo.
All right. Three, two, one.
Kick it up! Got it.
All right, let's give them another round of applause.
Glad you're here. Hey, young man, congratulations. Come on, come on, come on. Proud of you, man, you did a good job. I liked the way you introduced yourself, too.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Chenier. Next is a presentation for some of our great students in my district from Alder Grove and Marina Vista. Karen Wallace, why don't you come up, tell us about what happened here? And kids, if you want to stand with Karen, you can.
Guys, come on up. Come on up with me.
Yeah.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Hanson, City Councilmembers. We're here today because we... Oh, excuse me, everybody don't know me. I'm Karen Wallace. I'm a program manager with SHRA, the Resident Services Department. And the reason we're here today is to celebrate the youth that are standing behind me. We received an email from 360 Cradles to Career, which is a STEM program, along with University of Houston. And so, they asked us, along with HUD, would our children be interested in participating in a STEM program that deals with the Mars habitation? So, what it would be like if you lived on Mars? So, there were two parents that we actually brought in with a stipend, who went through a whole process of six weeks, teaching the kids based on the information they received from the University of Houston. So, the children competed against housing authorities across the country. And so, what ended up coming out of their lessons and putting together their whole Mars habitation was that our middle school children took first place, and our elementary school kids tied for third place. So, we're really excited to celebrate them and the hard work that they're doing. And one of them is going to come up and have a word with you all. Who's going to come and speak? Who was my speaker?
Well, first of all, who's on Teen Goals, that team? Raise your hand or your trophy if you're on Teen Goals. All right, that was the first-place team. And the third-place tie, go ahead. Our elementary group, the team named Black Yoshi, which is a great team. Can you raise your hand if you're on Black Yoshi? Congratulations. Karen, did you say who's going to speak for the... Tell us your name.
Hello, my name is Antoine Forbes. I go to Sacramento... I mean, I go to San Brandon Middle School. I'm a seventh grader, and I love, you know, engineering a lot, especially like science. So, it's been a lot.
How did you tell them a little bit about the program, what you learned?
What I learned about the program was that it involved like engineering and stuff, so, you know, definitely I was going to join. So, I just wanted to join for the fun, and then found out that it was very fun, then I just kept with it. And then... Yep, and then I won. My team won.
Thank you, Antoine. Why don't we have everyone introduce themselves, and then we'll do a quick photo, and I have resolutions for each of you.
Just say what your name is, that's all you have to say. What's your name and what school do you go to?
My name is Kiadre Walker, and I go to Pony Express Elementary.
Awesome.
My name is Jalen, and I go to John Capillo.
My name is... My name is Julia, and I go to Leah Tata.
My name is Demariet Carlos Morales, and I go to Leah Tata Ford Elementary School.
My name's Ladeja, and I go to Cal.
I'm waiting for everybody to talk. My name is Shania Skakis, and I go to Burbank Elementary High School.
Congratulations, everybody. Congratulations. We're going to do a photo. Samantha from my team is passing out your resolutions. If you have parents and you're here... Sorry, if your parents are here and you want to join us for the picture, please come down. This is a great success of Sacramento Housing Authority STEM Camp, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math Program. So, congratulations, Karen and LaShelle. I'm going to come down.
Councilmembers, you guys come behind these two.
Why don't we just step forward a little bit? Here's your resolution. All right, come around the middle. I'm sorry. Come around the middle. All right, you ready? Three, two, one. All right, Madam Clerk, let's do the consent calendar real quick, and then we'll get the public comment.
And Vice Mayor Hanson, I do have two items to read into the record.
All right.
Item 13, for Section 2 of the resolution, for the Traffic Signal Safety Project, the intersection location of Pocket Road, Elena Marie Drive, will be removed and replaced with the location of 24th Street, 24th Street Bypass. That's the only edit. And then for item 23, master plans and naming for the farm, community garden, and trail for the Mill and Broadway Development Project, that item is withdrawn.
All right.
And I do have two speakers.
All right, go ahead with the public comment.
The two speakers for the consent calendar are Mike Jaskey on item 28, and Robert Copeland on item 28.
Mr. Jaskey and Mr. Copeland.
Is that Juicedee or Louis?
Jaskey, he's coming. Mr. Copeland, are you ready? Mr. Jaskey.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Mike Jaskey, representing Sacramento-area congregations together. Back in the spring, Mr. Howard Lawrence of Sac... appeared before you and endorsed the initial extension of the Railroad Drive Shelter from March 30th to May 31st. He noted the many benefits to those who are homeless from the city funding this shelter. We support this second extension out to August 30th. We're also very pleased that Sutter Health is essentially underwriting all of the costs, so that there are, if not, no... there are at least no planned costs to the city. Finally, we're encouraged that there will be active coordination with the COC Coordinated Entry and Assessment Program. While whole-person care and the city's pathways version of it is targeting high health care cost persons, and that's obviously important to the hospital systems who are providing a large proportion of the money, there are numerous needy persons who do not fit into the high health care cost template, and they merit consideration for other reasons: age, period of homelessness, disability, et cetera. And so, they... I'm happy that you are considering both of these as avenues into the Railroad Drive Shelter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jaskey. Mr. Copeland, it's your turn.
Is there any way we can get a permanent source of funding for this triage shelter? Because that's going to help a lot of people, and I'd like to see it expanded to women and children, if possible, another shelter. I don't care which district's in right now, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8. I'd like to see them all districts, but this is a good start, but I'd like to see it extended. And I'd like to see it, if the money's being used wisely. Is that possible? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. I don't see any council members punch up to speak. Do we have a motion? We have a motion from Councilmember Chenier, a second from Councilmember Guerra. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, abstain, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, we'll move on to public comment on matters not on the agenda.
Thank you, Vice... Thank you, Vice Mayor Hanson. I have 13 peoples signed up to speak on matters not on the agenda. Just wanted to remind folks that this meeting is being video-streamed and can be viewed live on the city's website, or later viewed from the archive files. And members of the public who wish to address the council should complete a speaker slip, which can be found at the back of the room. Speaker slips need to be turned in to the clerk prior to the beginning of each item. And so that everyone has the opportunity to address the council, members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. The council rules of procedure outline the decorum expected in the chambers, and can be found on our website. A copy is in the back of the room, and is summarized on the back of the speaker slip. For instance, use of swear words, yelling from the audience, physically threatening conduct, and displays of disrespect are discouraged. The presiding officer will request that a person cease disruptive conduct, and if not immediately stopped, the presiding officer will direct the person to leave the council meeting. Each speaker has two minutes to address the council. A cordless microphone or assisted listening device is available from the clerk. And please silence your cellphones or other communication devices, and refrain from using flash photography or lights-on video equipment. And parking validations are also available from the clerk at the front of the room. So, our first speaker this night is Lindsay Friedenberg-Humes, then Michael Voy, then Cynthia Spurling.
Good evening, my name is Lindsay Friedenberg-Humes. I'm the executive director of the Friends of Sutter's Fort. We're the nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization that partners with California State Parks every day to provide critical funding for Sutter's Fort State Historic Park here in Sacramento. We are proud members of the Sacramento Association or Sacramento-area museums, which is a network of about three dozen local museums that span the greater Sacramento region. And we're proud to be celebrating our 20th anniversary this year. And we are going to be having a celebration on the steps of the state capitol tomorrow. We invite all of you to participate. We encourage members of the Sacramento community to come out and participate and celebrate this amazing networks of museums that Sacramento has for all of our residents, and also that bring in tens of thousands of tourists to our city each and every year. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Michael Voy, then Cynthia Spurling, then Juve Spooner.
Mr. Voy, welcome.
Evening, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm going to talk about the Joseph Mann timeline again. I haven't finished that yet. But where I am, I'll do a quick summary here and get started. DA said she didn't have any evidence. The next day, the city settles for $700,000. Very same... They had the same... The city has the same defense that the officers would have had. There's a little difference in the standard of proof. There'd been a different jury. I don't know that that warranted a $700,000 payoff if there's no supporting evidence. That he didn't think it could win its case. Now, that's one possibility. The other possibility is, is... Well, there are many other possibilities, but the first one that I will address is the question of whether or not the district attorney had all of the evidence. And if she had all of the evidence, how did she use it? Now, the reason why I say this is because if the city goes... Their case goes to trial, there'd be a record to show what evidence would have been available and how it could have been used. So, that's important, very important from my perspective, anyway. And that's the first question that I would deal with. The second question is, the city never closed its investigation until months later. So, what was going on? If all of the evidence was sent to the DA, why is this investigation dragging on for six or seven months? And then, the city dismisses the officers, and they don't sue. I'm out of time, but we'll go back and address that issue next week.
Thank you, Mr. Voy.
Our next speaker is Cynthia Spurling, then Juve Spooner, then Elizabeth McDaniel.
Okay, right now, I'm upset. I found out by being in the audience here, there's a deposit program. Now, who's this deposit for? I've never heard of it, so obviously, you're doing it in another section of town. You're not helping me. You're not helping the people I meet out on the street. I'm downtown, I would say, most days, okay? The programs that they send me to, I got a social worker, she said, "Well, what about the one I took you to in February?" I said, "I'm 86 on the list." For a senior, that means that 86 people have to die before I get into a place. That's not a good position for a senior to be in. I have to hope that I'm not going to die before they do. And starting next month, I'm going to be on the street. There is no place else for me. I'm not finding any help. No help is being relayed to me. I have no idea. I'm out on the street all the time, sharing information. Nobody, nobody provides me with any information unless I come here, and it's people in the audience. Not anybody from the city, not anybody from the county. You need somebody to take a special interest in seniors that are out there. Thank you.
The next speaker is Juve Spooner. After Mr. Spooner is Elizabeth McDaniel, then Robert Copeland.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and City Council. Short and sweet, as like I said before, I will give credit to Mayor Steinberg, because he finally, he finally switched sides, and he endorsed Noah Phillips. Now, a few days ago, I thought he was supposed to be in office only. Well, when me and my friends coming back from lunch, I get pulled over by this son of a, you know what, I ain't going to say it because I'm going to keep my language. But short and sweet, I thought he was supposed to be in the office, not doing patrol. And trust me, you guys not know how hard it was for me not to do something I really wanted to do? Because that's the thing, y'all all got families to go home to. Stephon doesn't. So, just like this morning, when my freaking son said, "Can we all go see Uncle Stephon", I had to look at all my kids and say, "No." So, for those who has, that's still endorsing that freaking, looking like a witch from Hocus Pocus and Marie Schubert, you guys better take back your endorsements and actually do the right thing and endorse Noah Phillips. Because, and this is a message for him, if I see him again in the woods of Brockton, "Super egg, say your mother."
Our next speaker is Elizabeth McDaniel, then Robert Copeland, then David Andre.
This is to the mayor, actually, he's not here. But the last time I attended the council, he made a statement. He said, "Don't be coming up in here with misinformation." That's not so. I came up in here with information that one outsider told me about, and four insiders confirmed it to be so. That's your staff, and they told me that District 5 was the owner of my property. So, given that... If your staff doesn't know facts when dealing with the public, then they should be reprimanded or fired. For the city of Sacramento, we deserve better. So, the next time the mayor or whomever thinks about implying falsities on my behalf and attempting to throw me under the bus, then perhaps you should check your information before you come try to check me. I submit to the mayor again, he made a statement during the Stephon Clark. Is there a better way? And I say again, yes, there is. And it's in the Proverbs, Chapter 3, Verse 7. "Be not wise in thine own eyes; fear the Lord, and depart from evil." There is no weapon that is formed against me that will prosper. I want you to know that. The Lord is my shepherd, and I shall never want. I thank God that I'm alive, because I didn't die, but I'm here to declare his works. I know what I was told, but you all came before the American public and stated that it was an absolute lie. So, you all need to go check your records, because the information came out of your office. At the end of the day, God bless you, and good night. Remember that one eye in the metniss shed, people, that's in Point Nato in District 3. That's right, Luciferian devil worshippers.
Thank you, Ms. McDaniel.
Our next speaker is Robert Copeland, then David Andre, then Louis Guste.
I'd like this city council to join forces with this county board of supervisors, Rancho Cordova, Elk Grove, Folsom, Citrus Heights, city councils, and solve the problems in the county. Because rent is going up, not enough affordable low-income houses being built, RT is a sham right now. And you know I'm telling the truth on all that. What I... This city council reminds me of a football sports team that's in Cleveland. I'm not talking about the Cowboys, I'm talking about the Cleveland Browns, who won one game in the last two years. That's how bad you guys are right now. Fix your problem in the city. If I go down 10th Street, there's a 10th and 11th, there's a dangerous property. And if I go down 8th and K, there's like a whole block that's vacant. What are you going to do with that? And I'm sure there's vacant property, dangerous property, all over the... All over the CDN County. Fix your problem in the county. Crime is not going down, homeless is going up. Fix your property and fix your problem in Sacramento. Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Andre, then Louis Guste, then Nikki Jones.
Hi, good evening. I'd like to thank those of you who have rescinded your endorsement for Ann Marie Schubert. You did the right thing. Thank you. There's still being reports of the police and the rangers taking people's survival gear, taking people's tarps when they're exposed to the full rays of the sun, and they don't have any ability to get into the shade because of where they have to hide. That's very cruel. We had an agreement from our mayor at the first of the year, the survival... Or, excuse me, about the second week that he was in office, that survival gear would not be taken anymore unless there was another reason. So, what are these reasons? Why are the police and the Rangers continuing to take people's survival gear?
Our next speaker is Louis Gusti, then Nikki Jones, then Romell Pinzon.
I'm not a public speaker. I haven't spoken in public for 66 years when I graduated from college in '59. But I've seen something today, maybe decided 3:30 this afternoon to come down here. It's about the camping business. Across the street from where I live, at the McClellan Mobile Home Park, I seen a bunch of sheriffs pull all the garbage and stuff out of the bushes underneath the line, the train tracks underneath Watt Avenue, where the campers had been. And it was garbage. It wasn't tents, or sleeping bags, or anything. It was garbage, enough to fill three dump trucks. And that could cause a fire. What happened a few years ago was the viaduct out on, towards Woodland, when the train tracks burned up because of a fire. That can happen there, too. This young man always comes here talking about camping ordinance. Go there and teach him how to build a camp, and build it clean, and take care of it. Not be a junk pile, and burn everything up. He ain't helping, he just making a name for himself. I've been around for 80 years, and I've seen a lot of changes. I come out here today, the light rail, no canopy over the ramp where you're sitting and waiting the hot sun. I get in the train, the driver takes off before I even get my wheels locked. I go rolling down the aisle. And I said something about it, so he come out, he said something to me, because he's listening to me on the audio tape. I said, "Well, do your job right." I'm supposed to have my wheels set before you take off. I said, "You're gonna hear about it, because I'm going to the city council." And he didn't even know where the city council building was. I asked him, let me out where it was closest to City Hall. He didn't know, and he drives the light rail. What kind of employee is that?
Mr. Gusti, your two minutes is complete. Will you make your final comment?
One man happened to be out there helping me get partway. Pushing me, because I'm very heavy because of medical problems.
Mr. Gusti, your time is up. Thank you for your comments.
I have a lot more things to say, but I'm not coming back.
You're welcome back next week.
I almost died two weeks ago, so I just, I just wanted to let you know how I feel.
Thank you, your time is up. We have to turn it over to the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Nikki Jones, then Romell Pinzon, and then T. Whitney.
I'd like to reiterate the concerns of the woman that was here earlier, the senior who spoke about access to housing. I think that's an issue. You all have seen that for years, before some of you were even here, that we were here saying we need access to affordable housing, otherwise, our people, literally, our people are not going to have a place to live. And they don't. And they don't. Our seniors, our teachers, by and large, people don't have a place to live. And we know the situation for them when that's, when that's happening. Where are people going? We saw the 33 percent increase from 2015. They're going outside. We see the treatment of our people outside. We see the violation of their human rights constantly, on the day, today, today. Survival equipment aside, the move-along orders are torture enough. And, to be perfectly honest, none of that is why I came here tonight. With one week before the election, I'm disappointed and honestly astounded that most of this council is still supporting incumbent DA Ann Marie Schubert for reelection. What is it about reactionary power that appeals to you? It's okay to say that you were wrong, to check your first move, and to do something different. That's okay. It's okay to look at her record. It's okay to look at history and to say that our decision needs to be different. We know about DA Schubert's collusion with law enforcement. We know about 22 people shot and killed with no charges. But do we know that she voted, she opposed Sacramento voters who supported 67 percent to reform three strikes? Sacramento voters voted 53 percent to reduce felonies to misdemeanors. They voted 64 percent to increase parole chances. They voted 54 percent to legalize marijuana. These are Sacramento voters. DA Schubert opposed all of those reforms. Not just opposed them theoretically, she lobbied against them. So, she's fighting, absolutely, Mindy, she's fighting for mass incarceration. She is there. So, for those of you who say, like, "I want to turn this criminal justice system around. I want to see reforms that make our communities happy and healthy, that keep families together, that end racist..."
Please give us your final thought. Your time is concluded. Ms. Jones? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Romell Pinzon, then T. Whitney, then Padra Terrifard. For Pinzon.
Aloha, council. I know with, in July, there will be a hearing for these funds to, and I ask these questions and with the faithfulness that these are going to be released. I guess my question, I just have three specific questions for you, once again. What are we doing to implement policy and, and strategies to place these individuals, specifically from your district, Councilman Shinair, Shinair? A lump sum of the, of percentage of your seniors are the ones that are being displaced. And I'm asking you that, because what are we doing to give priority to these individuals? The average senior here in the Sacramento County area, according to Area Four Agent, Agency, individuals that you work with, like Pam Miller, has stated that the average individual has three medical complications and two disabilities. What are we doing to implement enhancements to these small houses? There's no, there's no transparency. These are very simple questions that need to be answered. The vast majority and growing populace in this county right now is the senior populace. I've been, I've been reaching out to all of you. And these are going to be questions that are going to be asked. What's it going to take for me to assemble a, an outreach in McKinley Park, in your district, in the most affluent and no-centric areas, just to prove a point, just so I can get somebody's attention?
Pinzon, your time is complete. Would you make your final comment? Thank you. Our next speaker is T. Whitney, then Padra Terrifard, then Mary E. Tappel.
As far as I know, the mayor has an opposition to people giving misinformation when they come up to the mic. And earlier, it was mentioned that he had rescinded his endorsement of DA Schubert. And as far as I know, he absolutely is not, and he's very confident in his decision to continue supporting her, despite what we all know about her. And this is a current shot of what's on her website, so I'm pretty sure it's probably accurate, shamefully and embarrassingly true. I was going to recite the same facts that Nikki just came up here and recited her, and I don't talk much, I do know her, but this is not coordinated. So, I'm not going to go over those same facts. You can get those numbers that she just rattled off from the Know Your DA website. But I will tell you that I have had the opportunity to meet with my council member, who's conveniently not here right now after my name was called. I don't know if that's coincidental or not. But, in talking to him, I talked about my experience. Thank you for interrupting me. So, this is the deal. Basically, it bottles, it comes down to something very simple for me. You go to the jail, you go to the jailhouse court, you sit in apartment 62, just do it any day of the week, and you look at the complexion of the people that are being arraigned. There you go. That, that's all you really need to know. You don't even need to have fancy numbers and statistics from a website. What you need to know is that if you take the time to do that, you just sit there for a couple of hours, what you see is brown and black men, particularly black men between the ages of 20 and 30, with braids and often dreads or locks. This is a very highly-profiled population of people. They're overpoliced, and they're represented in the court every single day. If you see the people going in and out of the jail, their complexion is the single biggest thing that they have in common. That's, that is institutionalized racism. It's being practiced here, and the district attorney is the gatekeeper for who goes in and out of the jail. I don't think I need to say more than that, because we all know the difference between white, brown, and black. We all know the spectrum of the hues. We all know that there's problems. And you guys are actually, it's not about the endorsement anymore for me, because I'm not confident that any of you will, I got you.
Will you make your final comment?
I'm not confident that any of you are going to change your mind, the way Mr. Warren did. However, you need to change the complexion of the jail. And by doing that, you need to overhaul systemic racism. You need to act. Quit being complacent.
Our next speaker is Padra Terriford, then Mary E. Tappel, and then Shira Lane.
And Ms. Lane is our final speaker.
That's correct.
I own a boat jet ski business on 7th and North B. For the last six years I've been there, and the homeless population is getting worse and worse. They are trashing the property that I'm on. Me owning a boat jet ski business, I'm on the water all the time. And the rivers are also getting trashed. We spent millions of dollars making Sacramento beautiful, and we just spent, I don't know how much money, painting that bridge. But yet, the shorelines are still trashed. There's litter everywhere, garbage, homeless people everywhere. And they have, from what I see, they have no respect for anything. They don't clean up their mess, and it doesn't seem like anything gets done. I don't know why we can't just kick them off the rivers. I see, I've seen...
Hey, please no shouting out from the audience.
I've been on the water for the last 15 years, and the amount of people that come in from out of this town has been getting less and less every year, because the river is just not what it used to be. And it's because it just gets trashed. It looks bad. It's a bad look for the city, and it affects my business. So, I'm hoping something can get done, and, yeah, clean up the mess and clean them up.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Mary E. Tappel, and our final speaker is Shira Lane.
Welcome, Ms. Tappel.
Hello, mayor, members of the city council. I'm here once again to emphasize that although a majority of our people in Sacramento are, in the city of Sacramento are women, female people, and a majority of the people in the county are female women and girls, we still have not only the apparent overlooking that we have a lot of teenagers being killed by gang violence, a lot of domestic violence in the home is where it starts. But I want to thank people for continuing to endorse our current DA, because she does take women's rights seriously. And I feel Marcus Bretton put it best, a whole lot better than I could, in The Bee, saying, "If Phillips melts down over something as random as a racist email sent to him by his uncle, what would happen if he had to face a real crisis?" Herein lies why most influential local Democrats can't get behind this guy, no matter how much they might want to. And a best quote was by Angelique Ashby of our council. "A man who thinks it's appropriate workplace conduct to sexually degrade and objectify women does not deserve the trust of voters," said Angelique Ashby, a powerhouse local Democrat and the only woman on the Sacramento City Council. Phillips is a prosecutor who was part of the system under scrutiny by progressive advocates. He barely, he was barely known when he ran. As recently as February, he used a West Sacramento address. There are other Democrats who don't want to be quoted, who saw him as arrogant and immature. So, that's from Marcus Bretton of The Bee on Thursday, May 24th, very recent. And I was appalled when I read that, that email and considered it. I'm one of the women who's been, unfortunately, a victim of violent crime in, in your city, and I don't want anymore to happen to anybody.
Thank you, Ms. Tappel.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Tappel.
Our last speaker is Shira Lane.
Welcome, Ms. Lane.
Good evening, council, good people of Sacramento, and the mayor. My name, this is Ori, and my name is Shira Lane, and I am the owner of Unleash Productions. And I'm also the director of a market and lab called Upcycle Pop. Upcycle Pop is America's first upcycle market with the goal to increase the awareness of circular economy principles. The Upcycle Pop Market is a place for people to come and shop for upcycled and repurposed items. You can watch artists repurpose items. You can sip kombucha and wine, and you can interact and play. This event is free, and we're inviting you all to come and participate in it. It's happening this, next Saturday, June 9th, and it's happening between noon and 6:00 PM at 7300 Folsom Boulevard. Every event, we try to help a small local nonprofit. This event, all alcohol proceeds go to the Library of Music Landria, a free library for musical instruments, so everyone has access to creative tools and music. I really invite you to come. Please come. It is a very different market, where you can play and experiment. And I'd also like to create a version of this with an addition of a wine tasting room in Old Sacramento. I believe this will enable our local creative economy to have access to approximately 5 million tourists a year, diversify and upscale the current retail in Old Sacramento, and increase local foot traffic. Please support our local creative economy, the sustainable entrepreneurs, by coming on June 9th, and helping bring it to Old Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. That concludes public comment. Madam Clerk, I believe that item 29...
If you have kids, please bring them, and I will be selling some things for you people.
Thank you.
Please come.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. We have flyers. Can you leave them with the clerk? Yes, thank you.
I believe, Madam Clerk, item 29 is being continued to the 12th of June. Is that correct?
I would need a motion to that effect.
Is there a motion? We have a motion from Councilmember Harris, a second from Councilmember Warren. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
And to reiterate, that's moving this, number 29, to June 12th. That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much, Vice Mayor. We're now on item 30. Mr. Mendez.
Mr. Mayor, request to consolidate 30 and 31 into one presentation, and we can take two separate votes.
Sure. Mr. Mendez, you're presenting on both?
Yes.
I, I wholeheartedly approve of the recommendation. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of City Council. I'm Jose Mendez, Code Enforcement Manager for your Community Development Department. The items before you are the Neighborhood Code Compliance and Housing and Dangerous Building Case Fees and Penalties for Special Assessment Leans and Personal Obligations. Item 30, the Housing and Dangerous Building Staff Report lists an amended total amount of 54 properties totaling $59,714.31 of unpaid fees scheduled for leans. Six properties listed in Exhibit A of the staff report have been removed from the report and are identified as line items 12 through 13, 43, 46, 48, 71 through 72, and 77. The Community Development Department, excuse me, item 31, the Community Development Department Administration of Penalties and Neighborhood Code Compliance Fees Staff Report lists an amended total of 96 properties with the sum of $290,970.97 of unpaid fees and penalties scheduled for leans and personal obligations. Eight properties listed in Exhibit A of the staff report have been removed from the report and are identified as line items 3, 11, 22 through 24, 63 through 64, 67, 85, 145 through 146. Staff recommends that the city council adopt both resolutions, amended resolutions, separately, and allow the city to collect the unpaid fees by placing special assessment levies and personal obligations upon the properties. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much for both 30 and 31. Okay, are there, is there public testimony in that? And we do have a couple of council members. Councilmember Geta.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank Jose Mendez and all of your code enforcement folks for helping out with some of the issues out in the Talik Village area with some of the vacant homes and properties. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll move to close the public hearing and move the, move item 30.
Then you need to open the public hearing first.
Open the public hearing and move the, open and close the public hearing and move the item. There we go.
Very good. We have Councilmember Shinair. Thank you. Is there a second on the motion? Second by Vice Mayor Hanson. Councilmember Shinair.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo that. Jose's been terrific coming out to community meetings. I think Code is doing a great job. We're hearing a lot about illegal dumping getting picked up, very timely, things like that. So, it's incredibly important to our neighborhoods. We know the problem has gotten larger, and you guys are just working... We know the problem has gotten larger, and you guys are just working harder. Just want to say thank you.
Okay, very good. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained. That measure passes on a nine to nothing vote. We now move to item, and now, a motion on item 31.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to open and close the public hearing and accept the second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I'm aye. Opposed, abstained. That passes nine to nothing. Now let's move to item 32. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. I'm Tyrone Roderick Williams, Director of Development at the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. The items before you tonight really are focused on three areas. One is the Housing Authority, is to grant the Housing Authority resolution that authorizes the Housing Authority of the City of Sacramento to apply for a U.S. Department of Housing and Redevelopment, that are known as HUD, Section 8 loan, in the maximum amount of 16.4 million to fund infrastructure improvements required for the Twin Rivers Transit Oriented Development and Light Rail Station project. The second item before you is the approval of the 2013 through 2019 Consolidated Substantial Amendment, amends the 2018 One Year Action Plan authorizing the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency to submit to HUD and pledge community development block grant dollar funds to cover the repayment of the Section 108 loan. And finally, approval of a resolution which authorizes SHRA to submit an urban greening grant application in the amount of up to $5 million for the River District Park Active Transportation and Stormwater Project. The Twin Rivers Project is more than a public housing project. It is a community transformation project. The Section 108 loan will cover infrastructure that is required for the replacement of 218 public housing units that currently are in, located in 93 separate buildings. The infrastructure costs at this point are 21.7 million for all new infrastructure, including new wider streets with new bike and pedestrian lanes, new utilities, and stormwater detention systems designed to recharge groundwater supplies and minimize the impact of existing systems and new infrastructure that is needed to support five new blocks of mixed-income housing for 487 households, all with supporting amenities. Before we came to, before you tonight, we have exhausted many different opportunities and to identify resources for this project. This is a monumental project for this city, and to date, we have exhausted every potential and possible financing resource, whether grant or other application, to get us to this point. We are on a tight timeline with HUD, and they've been very accommodating. We have a deadline of 2022 to complete the expenditure of all $30 million for which this project was granted to the city. During this time, from the time that we were granted the project, we've been working with HUD to get to the point, and they've been very accommodating. They know that we have applied for numerous funds. They know that unlike other cities, this city does not have a large pool of dollars in the amount of 40 to 60 million that it can allocate to this project like many other cities have. And so we're at a point where they are, let us know that we're running out of time. They are aware that we are exploring this opportunity. They are aware that we are meeting before you tonight. And so what we're putting before you is a monumental opportunity to move this project forward, to provide affordable, public, and market rate units, the largest development project of its kind in this city, being mixed use. And we are here to answer any potential questions that you have. The resources that are used for a Section 108 loan are resources from community development block grant dollars and other resources as they become available. SHRA has a very successful track record of managing Section 108 loans that include Del Paso Nuevo, which is a subdivision that we've been working on paying down the loan now, and just have three more years of that payment. In addition to those funds from block grant development dollars, we also have the flexibility and the opportunity to use program income as it becomes available. Program income is funding that comes to the agency that is flexible, that could be used to pay down the block grant portions of this loan as they become available. This loan is also secured by properties owned or managed or controlled by the Public Housing Authority. Currently, we have identified over $17 million of property that we can use as collateral, which we have done in other cases and times before. We are at a critical point in the need for affordable housing, and this is the largest project currently ready to move forward. We have residents who are, have been relocated. The demolition date is set for June 25th. We appreciate your support. In addition to myself, I have Tony Zalasar, who is the president, and one of the founding members of McCormick Baron Zalasar here. And he, he and I are available for comments, but he has some things he'd like to share.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Mayor, City Council members, thank you for the opportunity. We are a national development company, very mission-driven. We have, we work with housing authorities and, and cities throughout this country. Every major, we're in every major city in the United States. We have, just to give you a scope of our company, we've developed over 22,000 units, and, and we manage over 33,000 units. And many of those are affordable and in the public housing realm. We have, we are the largest national developer of public housing transformation in this country. When there was a HOPE 6 program, we did 31 of those around the United States. And as HUD moved into a new kind of public housing transformation program called the Choice Neighborhood, they have since, in the last six, seven years, have only awarded 22 Choice Neighborhood Developments, only 22 in this country. And they've, and they've awarded them to cities that have the, have the skill, the infrastructure, the desire to rebuild its public housing and, and to create a new kind of development, both that is mixed income, that not only transforms the development, but transforms people's lives and rebuilds neighborhoods and urban cities. Of the 22, we are the developers of 10 of those in this country. So we, we know this program. We've worked this program. We're in partnership with housing authorities and cities throughout the United States. In, in this particular case, I want to say that the city of Sacramento beat out about 25 different cities for this award. And we are now at the time where we're implementing. We have, as, as, as a developer, we've invested our own capital here. We've, we've invested $3 million of our own capital in this development so far. That's how, that's how confident we are of both this partnership with, with the city and, and with you as well. HUD, and I want to just mention a couple of things about HUD grants related to the Choice Neighborhood. They are very specific in terms of dollar amounts. They're very specific in terms of when you spend that money. And there's a back-end date that says your, their money has to be spent at, by a certain time period. In this case, it's somewhere around 21, 22. So we, 2021 to 2022. So we need to start this project now. We need to begin the infrastructure to lay the groundwork for us to do the phased developments going forward. We, we, we are very confident this would be a successful project. There's only two in, in the state of California. One in San Francisco called the Alice Griffiths Project, and this one in Sacramento. So you should be very proud. You beat out national competition. Now it's time to implement. It's tough. It's, it's big, but it isn't anything that, in partnership, that we can't do together in making sure that this happens. I'm, I'm prepared to answer any questions regarding the project, regarding the HUD, and the HUD program, or any, anything else we need to discuss. But thank you very much for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it very much. Do we have public testimony?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have four speakers on this item.
Why don't we hear from the speakers, and we'll turn it to the members of the council. I know I have some questions too, but I'll first turn it over to Vice Mayor Hanson, Councilmember Harris, or vice versa if you want to reverse it. But let's hear from the public first.
The first speaker is Gail Morgan, then Rand Williams, then Derek Tennessee. Gail Morgan here. And it could be Ghul Morgan. There we go, Gail.
Gil Morgan.
Gil.
Okay.
Sorry, I was a little short. You couldn't see me back there, I guess.
That's okay. Sorry. Welcome.
So I'm on the Sacramento Resident Advisory Board, which is the...
Can you speak up a little?
Resident Council.
That's better.
For all the residents that live in public housing. And we've looked over the proposal. I've had meetings with, with staff. And the Resident Council supports wholeheartedly their 108 loan and the greening project. We are very much in support of the entire CNI project. We'd like to see that go ahead. At our last vote on this, it was unanimous support. And we're looking forward to your favorable vote on this.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. Appreciate it for speaking out.
Our next speaker is Rand Williams, then Derek Tennessee, and then Patty Klein, Klein Connect.
Klein Connect.
Give me a few weeks, I'll get it.
All right.
Klein Connect.
Welcome, sir.
Good evening. My name is Rand Williams. I'm here in support of the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment project that's going on with the redevelopment. This is, this is the first time I've ever spoken at a City Council meeting. I'm a little nervous about it. It's something, it just hit directly to persons in the community more than, it's never concerned me to have to come up to speak to a council about anything. Not only does this project that I am in support of provide families in the community with, with an opportunity to live in housing that they would not otherwise be able to afford. It's a great project. I happen to see the blueprints and things like that. But it's also created job opportunities that is life-changing. I happen to be privileged to be enrolled in an MC3 core curriculum pre-apprenticeship program that has been generated from the development of this housing project that is requesting additional funds for, apparently. This is being taught by a gentleman, Mr. Kevin Brown, who is an administrator that covers every aspect of every building trade in the union. It's, it's almost unheard of, this opportunity that it presents, the development of this housing project. And for a person like myself and others that are enrolled in this program, like I said, this is something that, an opportunity that seems like it just would not otherwise be possible. And so I strongly urge the committee to give great favor to the approval of the funds needed to go forward with this program, because not only is it providing housing...
Rand Williams, your two minutes is complete. Will you make your final comment?
Providing housing, but it's also giving life-changing experiences and opportunities to everyone else that's enrolled in these programs that are allowing them to, to work and the job opportunities.
Thank you very much, sir, for coming tonight. We appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Derek Tennessee, then Patty Klein-Connect.
I'm Derek Tennessee, and I'm in that program. And I'm one, I guess I'll probably be a poster child for that program, for just the reform that, that is bringing to the families in the community. And I think it's a very good, great program. Kevin Brown's a great man. He's one of the best men I ever met. And his program is, y'all should fund that. He's funded.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming tonight. We really appreciate it.
And our last speaker is Patty Klein-Connect.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Patty Klein-Connect with the River District. I don't know if I can top the testimony given by the residents here. This is clearly a program of opportunity. Plans for the Twin Rivers project have been in the works for almost 10 years. And this project is located in one of the city's most challenging areas. It's badly needed. It's on the edge of downtown. It's a mile from our Capitol. It has so much going for it, yet it's been isolated for years among commercial, commercial businesses and aging infrastructure. SHRA and city staff have tried diligently to secure funding to make it a reality, and it's happening at a time when it will provide housing we so badly need in our community. They've left no stone unturned, and they'll continue to work on behalf of the project to make it successful. As the River District, we look at this as being a catalyst for future development. It will show the possibilities for the area, which has long been home to commercial warehousing businesses that emerged to support the rail yards. The rail yards, as they once were, no longer exist. It's time to bring the area into 21st century by locating housing and jobs in the central city and near transportation. We urge you to support the recommendation and let the work get underway to create new housing and opportunities.
Thank you very much, Ms. Klein-Connect. Appreciate it. We, that, that is the public testimony. Let's turn it over to the City Council, begin with the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Tyrone. Thank you for the presentation. This project is a very large project. I think it's probably apt to call it a mega project. And the council, including myself, has been extremely supportive of this project for a lot of the reasons that you stated. And I think we were all elated when we got the $35 million from the federal government to begin this transformation process. But one of the things that I, in, when we met in my office with you and Ms. Dozier, to talk about this particular desire to set aside CDBG funds, Community Development Block Grant Funds, for infrastructure, I asked a few questions, which I, I still would like answers to. One is, and feel free to come up, how much money is of the, so the total project, as I understand it, is $310 million for 487 units. Roughly 600 and, second, $636,000 per door to replace these units. And I, I'm not sure that that includes the $16 million that we're setting aside for infrastructure. This request to obligate city CDBG money for 20 years is new. That wasn't in the finance plan that we got as recently as January. And so I'd like to understand more what sources you looked at, because you said you looked at a variety of sources. How much developer fee is being set aside to cover expenses like this? Whether the River District Infrastructure Financing Plan, which sets aside millions of dollars as well to be able to fund this type of infrastructure, is being looked at as a source? And then whether or not you looked at an EFID, an Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, or some return of tax increment from the 100 and, hold on one second, the 135 market rate units?
To answer the first question, we have, in January, we had applied for a HSC grant, which would have covered a significant portion of the resources. Although we were a finalist, and...
Although we were a finalist and put forth a very competitive plan, we were not funded. It was at that point that we realized that we had to explore every possibility, and that's when we began to really seriously consider what were the options, given the timeframe that we had to operate. Well, I think one of your questions was, there are conventional sources involving repayment through property, taxman accessibles are not viable alternatives at this point. We've looked at the AHSC. Today, we are included in this is about 3.3 million in the urban greening grant. We're continuing to look at all options. I think where we are at this point is because of the timeframe. Having the opportunity to secure the funding provides us with the opportunity to every potential funding source, including finance district funding, which we did explore when that first came out, to look at every possible other option, but knowing that this project can get started, and that HUD knows that this project gets started. At this point, we're open to exploring every option, even bank financing. If there are lenders who are able to gain significant CRA credits for basically a takeout loan, we will be exploring that. So I don't want there to be the impression that once the Section 108 loan is in place, that SHRA ceases to explore all options and takeout strategies for this particular loan.
And just as a follow-up, after our meeting where you did mention about the River District Financing Plan, we did meet with city staff about that, and so they were able to take a look and did identify some potential resources as that financing plan gets up and running that could be dedicated to this.
Do you have a new pro forma that shows that money and the sources?
When we met with the city staff, I think that they've just done the preliminary. I don't have that pro forma. But it was around, just approximately, it was about $600,000.
And were you able to look into the EFID, or using some form of tax increment to finance?
We did explore. Early on, when we even got started of creating a tax increment finance district, one of the questions was for the River District, from previous bond initiatives, what was the capacity and the ability of creating a district, given the bonding obligations already in place? But we can continue to explore that possibility. The key is to having the opportunity to get started, and then being able at every opportunity to look at what we can use to take out the loan, including any of those. Even starting a district requires the legal, forming the district, and getting it up and running, and then beginning to throw off the revenue that would support that.
One of the questions that's come up as well is, this is a county housing authority asset, and given that the city's put in $5 million of its housing trust money into the county housing asset, and now being asked to put $16 million principal, which is actually, with interest, another $7 million, so we're on $21 million worth of CDBG into the project, what is the county doing to invest in its own asset? Because I believe it actually has more capacity from a CDBG standpoint than the city does.
At every step along the way, the county has been very supportive. The county provided the initial $1.2 million that allowed us to have a match for the block grant dollars. They've provided additional support that allowed us to secure properties for the light rail station. And we've been working with, at that time Supervisor Serna, in moving that forward. And at every point that we brought something to them for the approval of this project, they've been very supportive. However, the city is the co-applicant on this application. Even though it's kind of complicated, even though it is a county asset, it is the city that is the co-applicant. It is the city that HUD is in partnership with. And it is the partnership between SHRA and the city that the award of $30 million was made to. We've done some investigation. The county has the ability to invest or provide funding for different aspects of the project, and that's why they were at the front end, providing it with the planning. As we move through, there will be other needs for funding, and at that point, we will be exploring not only grants and other funding sources, but there will be an opportunity to talk to the county about any additional resources that could go to this. At this point, after we found out about the, not receiving the funds from AHSC, we just moved quickly to what we knew we could apply for, and HUD has been working with us to move that forward.
Is there any reason, though, why the county can't be a co-applicant with us for this AHSC, or for this 108 loan?
At this point, we're unclear as to how two separate jurisdictions can jointly take on the responsibility of one loan using two separate funding, block grant funding sources. That is something that we can pursue, but at this point, we're not aware how that, or even had discussions with HUD regarding how that could work.
If I'm not incorrect, the agency, the housing agency, actually administers the county CDBG program, just like you administer the city program. Is that correct?
That is correct. Administering is very different than binding the liability. And so under a Section 108 loan, you would, in that particular situation, the county then would be committing its funds and being liable to the repayment as well as the city. In this instance, it is SHRA who's providing the collateral for both.
So the city is binding itself for 20 years, but isn't there sort of like a holy trinity here, a clover leaf of sorts, that you couldn't bind the two spirits together to create a grant application that can serve both, given that this is not a city property, city housing authority-owned asset?
Our application, we're working with HUD to move this along quickly. I'm not suggesting that we aren't willing to have any discussion with any entity or jurisdiction regarding the possibilities of what is possible. But given the deadline that we have, our ultimate goal--
The 2022 deadline?
No, the deadline for the application. We have to submit the, the opportunity before us today is to submit the application such that it is approved by the end of the year so that we can move forward. It is the infrastructure that is the first major component. So until the infrastructure gets started, all housing development has to follow that. So the further we continue to push out the deadline, the more HUD becomes concerned about our capacity. At some point, HUD then has the opportunity to request $30 million back, if they feel as though Sacramento is a city that's unable to commit to its timeframe and the commitment to the project.
So I just have a couple more questions. One is, the cost per door here is really shocking. It's the cost, the cost rivals what I've seen in San Francisco and LA. For much less money, we've been able to leverage more units in projects that are different than this. You have granted a very high infrastructure cost, but on other infill projects that are restricted affordable, we've seen even through the agency, as little as $150,000 per unit to do 800K, which I believe is remarkably low. We, at the St. Francis Apartment, also have seen low cost, the Bellevue, $157 a unit. We're looking at Lavender Courtyard, which has not yet been built, about $151,000 a unit. It doesn't appear that the kind of 700K, $121,000 a unit.
I don't, I'm unclear of the exact total amount that you're looking at, but our budget not only includes the unit costs, but all of the amenities that include parks, that include much more amenities and costs than those projects that you just mentioned have as part of them.
Are we also subsidizing the market rate units with this infrastructure and financing?
All of the units will be served by the infrastructure.
Is that, are those market rate units contributing to the cost of the infrastructure?
All of the units are contributing to the cost of the infrastructure, because all of the units are served by the infrastructure.
How are those units at our market rate contributing to the cost, the 135?
Because they exist. So because those units exist, that means then that we have to provide the infrastructure that supports all of those units.
No, how are they paying for the infrastructure? How are the market rate units that we're going to subsidize through this, how are they paying back for the infrastructure that is their proportional share, that would, for any other market rate project, would have to deliver its own infrastructure?
At this point, I can get back to you with the exact structure of how this project is structured.
I don't, I'll, thank you, Tyrone. I appreciate the answers. I'm not satisfied at this point. I think the agency has done a lot to try to move this project forward. I think it needs to continue to dig deep and find sources of funds to help. And if after that, you've come up short, I think obligating the city's CDBG money for 20 years, granted, there may be projects in other disadvantaged communities that need help. I believe we've only ever done one of these loans prior, that I know of, at Del Paso Nuevo. And so this is an extraordinary ask for one of our most flexible funding sources. And I believe, too, if the federal government cuts CDBG money, that we would still be on the hook for this. And given the current Congress, I think that is a fairly important worry. So at this point, I would, I would support continuing the urban greening application and some of the other pieces, but I cannot support the 108 loan until I get more information.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Council Member Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. The Vice Mayor asked some pretty tough questions, but I think they're all valid. You know, the CDBG money, a question that I have for you, Tyrone, is what projects are we going to lose out on by encumbering this money for 20 years? What kind of projects does CDBG fund? What are we looking at foregoing by encumbering this money to this one project?
While I don't have a crystal ball to anticipate what projects in the future could be coming over the next 20 years, so I cannot answer that question. But I can say, what projects will we be forfeiting if we allow $30 million in the greatest period of housing crisis with very limited funds to be retracted from us at a point where we have basically begun to vacate the public housing and prepare to move forward? That is an answer, a situation that I can't address. I cannot talk about how many would be in the future.
I get you can't prognosticate what kind of projects would come up, but give us an idea of what kind of projects CDBG has funded in the recent past.
All of the projects that have been funded by Community Development Block Grant Dollars have been approved by members at this diocese. And our goal is to leverage those dollars.
And just as an example, as you know, the CDBG funds are separated into separate categories for funding. So there's capital improvement projects, there is public service projects, there are funds that we set aside specifically for housing as well. So I just don't want to, I want to make it clear that the funds we're talking about is not the entirety of the CDBG budget. It is a portion thereof. We have always set aside money to do housing-related projects, but because of the nature of CDBG, sometimes it makes it difficult for developers to use this funding for a housing purpose. Infrastructure is a perfect use for CDBG, but sometimes developers do not like CDBG because it will trigger prevailing wage. So we really have to look at the flavor of the project to determine if CDBG is a good use of it for a housing purpose.
So, Michelle, thank you. I appreciate that clarification. So what percentage of CDBG is being allocated to repay the 108 loan?
So it's approximately, I believe, about 23% of the total. I think it's around 23.
Well, that's a very salient fact. You know, that's an important piece to bring out. You know, I understand the full import of this project, and as you know, I've been an ardent supporter for the last three years. I understand the importance to the River District, to the build-out of the rail yards, but I am concerned about this, too. So I wanted to ask this. If we dedicate these CDBG funds to pay back the 108 loan, that does not preclude us from developing any other source of income we could substitute to repay. Is that correct?
Right. In fact, one of the things that HUD does allow us to do, which we have done in the past on previous 108 loans, and we've done more than just Del Paso Nuevo, we've also done, Globe Mills was another Section 108 loan, then we've also in the past done some other Section 108 loans for some capital projects. But HUD allows us the flexibility to use additional funding sources that we may derive over the course and the terms. So by committing to it doesn't set us in one course of action. We can use various grants. We can use program income. We can use money, as Council Member Hanson brought up, if the infrastructure or River Financing District comes into fruition, we can use that. We can actually refinance the loan if loan rates drop, and we've done that in the past. We've been able to refinance and get a much more favorable interest rate. So they do give us a lot of flexibility in terms of the repayment and the sources of repayment from the funds.
So in this case, does using CDBG funds, is that going to trigger prevailing wage where it wasn't going to be used previously?
It was already going to be triggered on this particular project, because they are public housing units that are being replaced, as well as another contribution that the county made is the allocation of project-based vouchers to this particular project, which then, of course, triggers prevailing wage.
Right. So thank you for that, too. You know, losing the AHSC grant and the TCC grant were really big blows to this project. Assuming we go ahead with the Section 108 loan, do you have construction funding, once we get past the infrastructure piece?
As you know, our first phase of construction funding, we have submitted that application, and it is currently pending, so we will, we're waiting to hear in June.
And the source of that is?
It's an application from the cap and trade funds.
Okay. And what amount would that be?
The total, I believe, is 20, 20 million? I think it's a $20 million application, and that covers our first phase.
Yeah, so then, moving forward from there, is it going to be a scramble for money to complete the project? I mean--
I think this is a project, what's important to realize is that this is a project that is multi-phase, so it really goes over multiple phases over multiple years, which means that as each phase becomes available, then that's where we really start to put together that financing package, and we bring that before you. Some of the, sometime what happens is, things that we start out with, you know, new sources of funding starts to come onto the table. And we know that at the state level, there are a lot of initiatives there in terms of funding that is being proposed, and it's already come to fruition in terms of housing. So we start looking at every, every, every single funding source, and that's how we put every phase together as we move forward.
So I'm a bit ignorant about this, but is No Place Like Home money that becomes available? Is that, is that a possible funding source for the Twin Rivers Project?
I think we could look at every single funding source, including that one as well. It does have some specific types of recommendations. I see someone over there shaking their head, but we would obviously look at it.
As the, if I may--
Please.
As the sponsor of the No Place Like Home Initiative, this is the $2 billion housing bond rising out of Prop 63, the Mental Health Services Act, which will probably go on the state ballot to be affirmed in November. It arguably could be used if the project sets aside units for people who meet the definition of mental, of, under the Mental Health Services Act. But you know the way these projects work, at least a little I know, is that it's stacked capital, right? It's different sources. And so this could be a significant source, as long as there are proportionate units set aside for the target population.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And particularly for that funding, not only sources for those units, but also services. And so with each potential funding source, there are requirements and guidelines for that particular population.
I would, if I may, Jeff, I'm sorry, I would point out, however, consistent with Council Member Vice Mayor Hanson's question about city-county, all that money, of course, is going to run through the county. So SHRA is always, is perfectly positioned to bridge the, bridge the cooperative relationship between the city and the county on, on all of these issues. And we need to, because we don't, we need your help, because we don't control those resources directly.
So, building on that point-- So building on that point and on, on the Vice Mayor's point, it really seems to me that, that the county could participate with CDBG. And I would definitely ask you to pursue that, uh, full force. I just want to clarify one more point. So if we defaulted on, on the Choice Neighborhood Initiative's grant, if we didn't meet the deadline, who would be on the hook to pay it back? The city or the county?
City. The city was the co-applicant.
The city was the co-applicant.
And the money was given to the city of Sacramento as a co-applicant with the agency.
Okay. Very good. Well, you know, I think we've kind of exhausted this line of questioning. I'll make just one more comment. And as a builder, the cost per door on this project is extraordinary. I understand that there's tremendous amount of infrastructure, but if you back that out, it's still a pretty high number per door. As the project has progressed, the number of units has dropped and the overall cost has risen. So I definitely have some concerns about that. All that being said, you know, we're pretty deep into this project and I don't think we can backtrack. So I'm going to go ahead and move the staff recommendation.
Okay, been moved and seconded. We have more, more questions and comments. Councilmember Chenier.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Um, so a couple of questions and, um, I want to rewind a little bit if I can, because I, I do think it's an important project and we definitely need, uh, low-cost affordable housing. There's no question about that. Um, I share a number of the concerns that my colleagues have raised. So I want to add a couple more here. If we rewind a little bit, can you give us the timing of the need on this 16 million kind of? I know you've gone through a number of potential sources, but can you work through the timeline on that of when you knew you needed the additional funds and, because this has all been very recent, obviously for us?
I think the thing that really shifted our focus, because really up until we, we understood that we did not get the AHSC grant, which was a heavy lift. And we really thought that we were shoe-in for that, given that this is a transit oriented project and all that's engaged. When we got the word that that was not going to be a, a funding source at this time, then we had to shift into a whole different mode because HUD had been waiting two years, aware that we were going to be applying for those funds and we're very patient. But after that, we, that's when we really began to say, we, we, we're at a point where we've got to begin to seriously consider, um, the, the section 108 loan.
So when was that?
I, I'd say around the beginning.
We, we started to apply for the TCC grant in, I think it was October.
Really the end of the year because we had our, we had the site visit now right after, at the beginning of the year. And then that's shortly two weeks after that site visit or about, um, that's when we realized. So that was sometime in January, early February.
Last year.
Of last year?
Yes, because we had to, we did all of the preparation to submit the grant. So that was pretty intense before the grant was actually submitted.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just so I understand, January of 17?
The site visit.
January of 18.
It was this, this year.
Sure. Okay. So I thought LaShelle said last year.
We submitted.
Working on it last year.
But when did we get the notice that you didn't get the grant you had hoped for?
That was this year.
This year.
This year?
Mm-hmm.
So it's been about five months or so for you guys kind of scrambling, trying to find the additional dollars? But there was always a knowledge, there was always knowledge that the funds would be needed from somewhere?
Yes. That's why we were applying for the grant.
Right. And, but there was no kind of backup plan early on?
Well, the backup plan was looking at other sources. That included urban greening, that included, um, infrastructure funding that came from, through HCD. So at no point did we put all of our eggs in any one basket. But we continued to look at every source as a component or an element of putting together the total amount that would be needed for this project. And that's what we're proposing to continue to do.
Although it seems like all your eggs are now in the CDBG basket.
Well, at this point, um, given where we are, um, we're at a point where this is a guaranteed source. This is an opportunity to submit an application that we know will not be rejected. And that we have the support of HUD to, uh, do what they can to expedite it, given, um, where we are in our anticipated construction schedule.
I want to follow up a little bit on Mr. Harris's question. And I know we had this discussion in my office, but I think this is important for my colleagues as well. So, um, of the CDBG money that we're currently getting, and we don't know the future of CDBG because of this administration. We know it's been cut year after year. You're at about 23% of CDBG money, um, to pay off this loan. Is that correct? And so that's about $900,000 a year? $700,000 for a couple of years and then $900,000 year after year? Plus interest?
Hmm.
Right. So do you know how much the interest will be? Sorry. I know, I had asked that question before.
Um, the, the, the interest rate will be set at the time of closing, but right now we anticipate based on what HUD has provided to us, it would be about 3.6%. So the total, um, interest, uh, would be somewhere around $7 million.
Over the 20-year period?
Over 20 years, if it's not taken out before then.
So we're at $7 million on interest, but if we back it out, interest plus principal, we're at about $15 million.
It's about.
Over the 20-year period?
16.
Am I looking at the right numbers here?
Well, over the total 20-year period.
You have interest at 7.27, principal at 8.025.
Excuse me, what, what interest rate are you quoting?
The principal is at about 16 million.
16, so you're at 23 million or so. So, and, and the way I had asked just kind of how CDBG monies are divided up among council districts, for example. And what you had said, which I think is very reasonable, is you try to balance it out. So people are getting about the same amounts in various, in the various buckets that come out.
Um, and when we say balancing out, we, we're taking a look at the number of low-income individuals.
Right.
That are allocated throughout.
But if we, if we just straightlined it, basically over a 20-year period, this is two to two and a half million dollars per council district that we would be paying in to pay off this loan. Or monies that would receive by, be received by the council district that we're not getting to pay off this loan. And I'm not saying that's the wrong thing to do. We need affordable housing. But I want to be clear on Mr. Harrison's question is kind of what are we giving up? And I know we don't have specific projects on that, but Tyrone, would, do you think that's about right on the math? It's pretty back of the envelope, but.
I, I agree that, um, when the application was made, it came from the city of Sacramento. And many of you all at the dais were there to support that application. I think the expectation is and the knowledge is that the city, every city, not only this city, makes a sacrifice when they, uh, commit to projects of this scale and of this magnitude. So I'm suggesting that the sacrifice that you're alluding to by each one of your districts is what every other city, um, has had to look at making sacrifices to support a project of this scale. So we cannot deny that there will be, you could see this as a reduction if you, um, multiply that by all of the council members. But you could also see it as a, as a plus for this city and the number of units that will be built. And the fact that in addition to whatever you may view as being subtracted, there are $30 million that's being added to the city.
We understand. You're making, making a persuasive argument. Let's, let's do the questions, questions and answers here.
So for me, it's not, I, I'm not taking a position one way or another on it. What I'm trying to do, and this is the disheartening thing to me, is, and I think I've been very consistent in seven years or seven and a half years up here of trying to make decisions based on the data that we have. And, and getting full data on what our choices are here and what we're giving up or getting, uh, to do this, I think is an important thing. So my request to you all is as you come forward, I think had Mr. Hanson, Mr. Harris and I not asked those questions, we wouldn't be having the discussion about what will not happen, only what will happen. So I think I'm just asking as, as we go forward in this, that when SHRA brings a proposal like this, and again, I'm not sure how I would even vote on this because I understand we have some great sunken costs. We have an opportunity with the $30 million. I too think that the $610,000 a door is very large. And I've brought up kind of per-door charges before in the past when we've talked about other projects. But I just want to make sure that I and for my colleagues have all of the relevant information to make a decision on. And part of that relevant information is what we're not getting. It's not just what we are getting.
So if I may, on that, before I turn it over to Councilmember Warren, I, I want to hone in on this very question here. Because I, I, I'm not sure, there, there may be some, um, ships passing in the night here in terms of getting at the answer. This is how I understand it. We get $4.9 million a year in CDBG money, correct?
Yes.
Okay. As I understand it, $450,000 currently is dedicated to Del Paso Nuevo, correct?
455, to be exact.
Excuse me, I give you credit for the 5,000 there. There you go. Okay. The, the debt service for, uh, the full amount of the 108 loan from CDBG would be 1.1 million a year, correct?
Yes.
And you back out the 450 that Del Paso Nuevo, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So that is a net of about, um, about 650,000 additional dollars per year, correct? Is my math correct?
Yes.
1.1 minus 450.
And it's really closer to 1.2, but yes. Okay.
Yeah, I was going 1.1. So it's even more. It's closer to 750 net, uh, new money per year. I think the question that my colleagues are asking is this is not hypothetical. What projects would you fund? If we're getting $4.9 million a year and $750,000 is going for a quote "new" use, what will we have to cut from that $4.9 million currently being expended in order to meet that debt service? That's the question, not what future housing projects may or may not, um, not get built because we've spent the money on this project. If my, if I'm, if my math is correct and my logic is right, 4.9 is what we get. A new 750 is being allocated tonight if we vote yes. So that means a budget of 4.9 has to be reduced to about 4.15. What, what is getting, what is getting?
You're underestimating. The, is the Nuevo money, that's separate pot though.
That's, that's what you're.
And will eventually, after the three years, that money would be used for the payoff as well?
Yes, that would be rolled over into supporting the payment for this particular project.
Which will reduce the amount of CDBG money that needs to be spent, correct?
Yes. Well, but it's still, it's still block grant dollars.
New CDBG money.
That's correct.
So it's $700,000 of new CDBG money out of the $4.9 million base that you're asking us to spend tonight. And the question is, does there have to be cuts to existing CDBG funded programs in the city in order to meet that, in order to meet that obligation? Because you're right, it is choices and you sacrifice when you have to, when, when you're trying to accomplish something big and housing is a crisis. I get all that, but that, I want to know whether I'm asking the question correctly. And then what the 700,000, $700,000 worth of funding per year is that, um, we're currently spending, that we couldn't spend going forward because we're allocating it to the debt service for the 108 loan?
So maybe I can, let me make sure I understand. If I understand you correctly, you're saying of the new allocation, um, how will that work when we receive our CDBG funds? Will we have to cut some of those other categories that I referred to?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, every year you set aside as a part of those categories, also a housing portion. So there's the capital improvement projects, there's public services, there's planning and administration, but there's also a housing portion.
How much?
And usually that's around four, $500,000, so approximately, per year.
Where's that money currently being spent?
For housing projects as they become available. So essentially.
Or is it being spent this year, for example? Where's that four or 500 being spent this year?
This year, we did not allocate any CDBG funds for housing projects.
So it's sitting in the bank?
Correct.
How, how long, and it was, has it been sitting in the bank for the past several years as well?
No, no, because you have to use it within a certain period of time. And unfortunately, I don't know exactly the exact timing of that. But what I'm trying to say is that of the housing money in the future, you can say, because we have committed these funds for the CDBG loan, then we are not going to allocate any additional housing above and beyond what we're doing to pay back the section 108. So previously where you were putting aside additional money, so you were paying off the section 108 loan that you currently had, and then you're allocating housing funds. In the future, you can say, our housing fund allocation will not be used for new projects. It can be used to pay off this loan.
Let me, let me ask it a different way. Does any of the $4.9 million of CDBG funding that would be reduced by the $700,000 or so that we have to pay in debt service, would any of that come out of program as opposed to housing? In this, in any place in the city?
You would make the decision in terms of how much you would put into your programs. So it has to be paid first. It's allocated first.
And we make a decision every year what we want to put in program. Are there existing programs that are funded at a certain level that would have to be cut back?
No, because remember on this CDBG loan, we don't start paying on it until the end of 20, well, maybe that wasn't as clear. We don't start paying on this particular loan till the end of 2021. So they're not requiring us to start making payments on this CDBG loan.
Okay, so one more, one more try. I get that. But then in 2022, there's some youth program funded at, that we're currently funding to the tune of $300,000 a year. Doesn't that program, I'm being hypothetical, doesn't that program have to be cut in 2022 in order to accommodate the increased debt service?
No.
Why? I'm not, this is the math problem here that's, that's, I think.
Well, you don't have any programs that have funding that go multi-years for like three years. Every year you allocate the funds. Every year they come in, you allocate them. And at the mid-year, when we receive program income or repayments, then you reallocate.
We don't cut programs that are recipients of CDBG funds off after one year if they're successful programs?
They're, they're not those types. They're capital projects. So the money goes into the capital project and then it's funded and then we don't touch it. It pays for that program. It gets reprogrammed if that project is not done.
Okay, let's go back. Councilmember Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have a couple of questions for the developer. But also I just want to say that these concerns that Vice Mayor Hanson raised are very valid and concerning. I think Councilmember Harris also had some good questions. Uh, I want to say that $600,000 per door is extraordinary. And, um, I mean, and this is essentially the starting point. I recognize we're going to get a lot forward and housing is a crisis. We need housing. But so are precious resources are, um, that's a crisis as well. However, I want to look through that and I want to support this item if I can. So my question that really comes down to the developer. The developer has stated that they have money in the game now.
$3 million.
So you have $3 million of.
Cash.
Your firm's money already in, okay? Not staff time, but actual cash.
Does it include staff time?
Okay, that's, that's a good sign. The other thing is this, um, you know, when we did the arena deal, we put a cap and really insulated the city because the developer had to pick up all of the cost overruns. And so, and I believe that that was one of the biggest positive impacts to our general fund that we had when we negotiated that deal. So that there were substantial cost overruns when we did the arena. The developer's team picked all of those up. So the thing that I don't want to do is start at $610,000 a door and then continue to be sucked along because we're in an environment right now where costs are continuing to, to increase. I'm sure you're seeing that in other projects. And so what I'd like to hear you say is that your development team, if, if we were to approve this tonight, the way it's being proposed, is that you get, you would not come back to the city for any additional funding and that your development team would either pick up those cost overruns or somehow find another source that does not jeopardize the city's financial commitment or the city's credit on this particular project. And, and if you can answer those questions for me, that you guys are prepared to, to, to lock the costs to the. costs to the city, so whatever the additional expenses might be, your firm would come up with them somehow, then I think I can support this. But what I don't want is to start at a number that is three times the cost of what we build single-family houses for right now, and then to have, you know, you or the agency come back at some point in the future for additional funding, because to me, it would not be justified. I mean, it's borderline right now. But we are, as Councilman Harris said, we're a long ways down the line with this, and Councilman Chenier, I think, also has valid concerns. But as a developer, I think we have to have some confidence in your ability to deliver this project and also limit the city's liability or responsibility. And so, if you could give me comfort on those questions, then I think I can support this tonight.
Let me give you comfort where I can. And that's that, this particular, but let me preface it by saying that this particular program has the following principles, that was previously under the Obama administration, and it continues today. That's that, public housing as we know it, and particularly this one, that has become obsolete, needs to be torn down, cleared, redesigned, restructured, new streets, new sewer, new site, I mean, the works, right?
My background, I'm 30 years in the development business.
Good.
Okay, so I get all of that. What I need to hear you say is that you will not come back to the city for additional funding, and whatever the cost over and above what's your projections, pro forma, expectations, any of that, that you guys will commit to working that out without the city continuing to be called to the table.
I know what you want me to say, and I know you want me to give you that kind of comfort, but I need to preface it by saying these other things.
Well, I just want you to know that my vote will be contingent upon that being a limit to the city's responsibility.
I get it. So when it comes to rebuilding, HUD wants the following. HUD wants it rebuilt, they want the units replaced, they want mixed income, they do not want concentrations of poverty, they want all the units to be indistinguishable. Doesn't matter, I mean, the development will have a look so that all the units are indistinguishable, whether they're public housing, or a tax credit unit, or a market rate unit. So right there, there and that, as you're a developer, you know that we've got to build a unit that is attractive to everyone regardless of their income. And HUD says, we will put in our money, we will allow all kinds of relief to the city to try to get that type of development done, twice as large, indistinguishable, and a new development, and mixed income. I can't build a development that says, this phase is just for public housing, and this phase is for tax credit, and this phase is for market. Everyone needs to be equally distributed throughout. My responsibility as the developer is that each one of those is also going to be a tax credit phase, each one of those is going to be a public housing phase, each one of those will have a market rate. My job as the developer is to provide the guarantees for cost overruns, lease-up costs, operating costs. My fees are on the table for those. How, as you've been hearing for the last hour or so, how all the entire amount gets funded, again, it's layered, as the mayor was saying, there's all these different layers, there's probably eight, 10 different layers for each particular phase, and where I am required, and I am asked to provide those guarantees by HUD, by the investor, by the banks, by the city, I will, my guarantees will be on the table.
No, I get that. But again, what I'm saying is that, you know, once we are, I mean, we're in this deal, and we're being asked to contribute another significant amount of money, and in fact, we're an applicant, so effectively, we're a borrower, or the applicant as well, along with you.
That's right.
You know, let me just say this, at some point, the units will not justify the cost. You agree? At some point?
At some point, let me respond to something, because I think...
That should be a simple question, you should be able to say yes to that question.
At some point, whoever's involved in development may determine that the cost is beyond the point, but I, but my cost...
Say, you're a seasoned developer.
Very seasoned, yeah.
And so, at some point, you recognize that the cost will not justify a development. I'm sure there have been developments before you've had to walk away from because you couldn't put them together.
True. I've walked away from very few, but I have walked away.
Sure, no, I get it. I mean, you know, developers tend to be optimistic, we want to make it happen. I get that, I'm that way. However, 610,000 dollars a door is a lot of money. I mean, would you agree?
I would agree, and I would dispute that number, for sure.
Okay, well, I mean, the number that I've heard my colleagues speak of, and maybe LaShelle can provide clarity, that's a lot of money. My point is this, if we are at this point now where it could cost 610, now what we're saying then, or at least what I think I hear you saying, is that it may be lower, right? So there may be some, there may be some room in there that gives you some cushion in the project.
Yes.
I do not want to have this project come back to this council, or to me, with 30 years of experience, understanding, you know, what the responsibilities of a developer are as well, and understanding the developer fees and the types of opportunities that come out of this. And so, it's a significant project, the city needs the housing, but at some point, I would not be able to justify doing the project, you know? And I think it's fair, and I think it's okay for you to say, that's true, right? If we give, if this opportunity goes forward, and we're saying, okay, we're going to support this now with the additional request, which I want to do, but I want to understand that you are prepared to fill the gap, either through your company, your other projects, or through some other, you know, resource that does not call the city back in to play another financial role in this project. And for me, that would allow me to vote yes tonight. If it's something less than that, then I'm going to vote no.
I guess this is a point of clarity, Councilmember Warren, are you talking about the item that's before you in terms of the Section 108 loan?
I'm talking about...
If there are cost overruns with the infrastructure?
Yeah, well, let me, so I'm talking about overruns because that would trigger some additional need, you know, financial need. But even if we're not, if you were to say, if we support your request tonight, the city, you would not be coming back to the city for any more money on this project, be they cost overruns, you know, income projections don't work out, or revenue projections don't work out, whatever the issue is. If you were to say, we're not coming back to the city, then I'd say, you know what, we're here, we're talking about, even though we're talking about a lot of money relative to the whole project, it's still, you know, I could justify it at this point. But if you're, but if I don't get certainty that you won't come back for additional money, then I can't in good conscience support the project, knowing that as precious as housing is, the dollars that we have to develop housing is even probably more precious, because we may be able to do more with the dollars than what we're doing for this project. And I think we have to balance it out. And so, what I'm looking for is, as a seasoned developer, to say, I got this. I will deliver this project for the city of Sacramento, and thank you for your collaboration, and we're going to do our part.
I appreciate that. And I am, I have been confident and worked hard here. And I would say to you that if you vote no, will you give me my 3 million dollars back?
But wait a minute, sir. If you can't answer the question, look at it, it's okay. If you're not comfortable giving the assurance to the council member that, I suppose, you're going to bear the cost of any particular overruns, then so be it, that's okay. Well, the votes, we'll add up the votes one way or another, and it'll, or it pass, or it won't. But I just think, let's, and if you're genuinely not comfortable, that's okay, there's nothing wrong with that answer, but I think, just if you can't give the assurance, just say it right now, and then we can, we can maybe get home by 11 o'clock tonight.
I didn't mean to be flippant, Mr. Mayor, no, I didn't...
You're not being flippant, I just, but it's a hard, he's, the council member, the elected officials appropriately pressing you for a commitment, and if you can't give it, then just, that's okay, then just don't, and we'll move on.
But I just, I was making the point that...
We know we have to give back the 30 million if we don't approve the project, we know that, that's not his question.
Mayor, if I could interject, if we are, if we're talking about the item before you tonight, which is for the infrastructure, that's what we're talking about, is the infrastructure. I know we've talked, there've been some numbers that have been thrown around about the cost per door for the total project, but that's really not what we're talking about tonight. We're talking about this infrastructure loan. We feel very confident that the cost projections, everything that we've put together, that we'll be able to do the infrastructure loan without coming back and asking for more money to do the infrastructure.
And what if you're wrong?
Well, that's why we did a third party, we had a third party go out and actually certify the costs associated with that.
Fair enough, and you've done a good job, I have no doubt about it, but what if you're wrong? It's like the arena, it's everything else. Who bears the burden of a cost overrun on the infrastructure? That's what's being asked, and I think the council wants to do the right thing here, but they just want to know the answer to that question, I think it's a fair question.
Just to clarify the question, whether it's the entire development?
No, it's the infrastructure.
It's the infrastructure?
It's the infrastructure.
Are we just talking about the infrastructure?
Yes.
I thought, I'm sorry, I thought we were talking about the whole...
No, no, just please, sir, we...
Seven-phase development that you were coming at me pretty strong, and I apologize.
Hey, welcome to, this is all respectful, we appreciate that you're stepping up for our city, we know this is important, this is the give and take of the messy democracy, it's all, it's all good, and we respect you. But, so on the infrastructure, are you going to come back to us and ask for more money under any circumstances for the infrastructure? That's Councilmember Warren's question. Play the Jeopardy music, please.
It's not my intent to come back here for more infrastructure, no.
Okay.
It is not.
Okay.
I just want, you know...
But here's the thing, Councilmember Warren, it really is SHRA, it's really not the developer, it really is, it's really, the commitment needs to come from the director here. But I don't know, to be honest with you, in all fairness, I actually think, Councilmember Warren, respectfully, that I actually think, given where you're at, this is just me, that you probably shouldn't vote tonight for the project, because I don't think there is, I don't think that your question can be answered satisfactorily, because they don't know whether or not there's going to be an overrun, and if there is, then we're either, then we're going to face the same question in six months that we're facing tonight, whether we go ahead with the project or not. And so, I'm not sure there's an answer to the question, except she's going to try.
I think it's like, well, what I'm trying to say is, I think it's like any project that we do. How confident are we? Are we at 100%? Absolutely not, because things happen in any project. You know, we may start digging up and find, you know, some bones there that have to be removed, we may find, just there's unanticipated costs. As a developer, you know that, that sometimes things are going to come up that you don't know. However, given the work that we've done, and all of the verification, and the work at the site, we feel very, very confident that we will be able to do it within the amounts that we have put together in this staff report. It's not something where we feel, oh, yeah, we're kind of close, no. I feel very confident that we will not be coming back asking for more money for the infrastructure on this project. But can I give you 100% guarantee? Then, no, I cannot.
That's the answer. Thank you, Councilmember Ashby.
Yep, thanks, Mayor. We have this system where we put our name in a queue, and I did it a long time ago, and now I'm sort of dizzy from the last set of questions, so let's see if I can kind of get back to where I wanted to go with it. I appreciate all of my colleagues' input, and I think there's lots of good questions in there, but I also feel like taking a really big process that's multiple years behind us and multiple years ahead of us, and sort of laid it all on this one item, which is really just about infrastructure. And so, I'm just kind of, I think what you're hearing is frustration from the council that the project funding that was originally anticipated didn't come through, and so concern about being able to pay for other projects in other parts of the city with funding as we move forward. I think that, but it just sort of all seems to be falling on this one day where we're talking about infrastructure, so feels like an overemphasis on something sort of, that is just one piece of a, you know, seven or eight-piece puzzle. First of all, Tyrone, maybe, I keep hearing this number, about 600,000 per door, just to qualify this, you know, the project's been going on for a long time. I was the council member at one point for this project, a long time ago, three council members ago, I think, and I don't remember any projections that high, but I do know that the project is not a normal, I happen to represent the new growth area, so I'm pretty accustomed to dealing with per-door costs, but they usually don't include everything that is in this project, a childcare center, playgrounds, trees, raising the land, redoing all of the, so can you, is there a per-door projection right now?
I appreciate the opportunity to clarify, because sometimes, once a number is stated, it takes on a life of its own. The 610,000 dollars per door, 310 of that includes the development of the light rail Another 5 million is for residence services, and another 3.5 are for other improvements. So I think it's very important that we have an opportunity to clarify what that constitutes that number before we classify it as a, as per-door number. I don't know that other projects have included a light rail station, track realignment, and the rebuilding of a new transit station as part of their development cost.
Plus the internal parks and the childcare center on-site, and there are many amenities, so I just, maybe as a suggestion, because this council's supportive of all those things, they took the votes to do those things, maybe we can do a better job of communicating the breakout of some of the expenses that kind of go along with this project, so it doesn't all get lumped together and then misunderstood. So that might be one learning piece from tonight, is to break the project out a little bit better for the council members to be able to sort of visually see it as it moves forward. I'm sure some folks like Councilmember Harris are really know all those details, maybe the others that only see this when it comes to council for updates, wouldn't be quite as fresh in their recollection, right? What I remember when we first started this project, and we first were asking for promised zone and promised designations, was that this area was selected for really specific reasons, and I think this is important to remember every time we come back to making one of these decisions. And that is, the life expectancy in this area is seven years shorter than the rest of the city, 37% of the third graders can read at grade level, right? 37, that's how many third graders in that complex can read at grade level. It's 35% poverty rate across that whole zone, and there's a near 20% unemployment rate. The reason this area is selected is because it is the most challenging of our challenged areas, and I don't want to give up on that, and I'm sure my colleagues don't either. We're really far down the road, we're the ones who, we're the ones who made the commitment to this project, not SHRA. This council, a long time ago, said, we want to pick out the most difficult, most challenging area, and we want to hit it head-on and do the best we can to bring in better housing, wraparound services, work with the school district, work with the transit lines, work with SETA, bring in jobs, bring in employment, we want to hit it hard. And it actually, it matches this council's priorities even better than it matched the council at the time's priorities. And so, I'm not giving up on that. That being said, I think it's important for the developer in the room to really hear Councilmember Warren today, because it doesn't mean that you have us in a corner, right? We would walk away for it if the price tag gets too high. And the reason we would is because if it cost us so much that we couldn't help the rest of the city, that it hung us up on this project, we would tell you no. I just think it's important for you to recognize that that's what he's telling you today. I just think it's important for you to recognize that that's what he's telling you today and that the cost is getting pretty high, and we want to be able to serve every corner of our city. But we also made a big commitment to this project, but we don't want to be hamstrung into a corner.
It's okay. She's not... Member's not asking a question, so let...
It's okay if you wanted to...
Can I respond?
If there was something you wanted to respond to.
No, I just want... I do want to respond to something that has not been said, Mr. Mayor, and that's that these developments have a... The strategy is to double the number of units. In this case, we're going even beyond that to have a big mix of income. And what happens at the end, because we're talking about something that's going to have, you know, five, six more years of life. If at the end, we just don't have enough money, well, you know, we're going to end up with, you know, 450 units, not 550. And but the concept is to make sure that the units are of the highest quality for people of all income ranges.
Absolutely. So you've heard.
And so at the back end is when we reconcile all this.
Yeah. And we just want to know that we have a good partner in you, a financial partner too, and that you recognize the city's going to have its limit. And you can hear us hitting it already, and we're at infrastructure phase, right? So you just need to recognize that moving forward and be a good partner with us. Mayor, one thing I wanted to say to you that I just picked up in the vernacular on the CDBG conversation is the word program may have thrown you for a loop because we don't do... CDBG doesn't pay for multi-year programs. So she's using the word program, and you're hearing like your programs where we don't do one-offs. But when she says program, she means actually a project. I'll give you an example. So CDBG money would be used for something like putting in the lights in Alkali Flat. She would call that a program, where you would call it a project. It's just a vernacular issue, I think, is why that was confusing to you.
Okay.
But she wouldn't... They wouldn't allocate the money twice. It's just that they do that project, then it's done, then you have that same amount of money you could use again on the next thing.
It's helpful.
So, yeah, it's just a vernacular issue, I think. I was a yes, a strong yes, on making a big commitment to this project the first day that HUD came to visit us. And we went out there and met them at lottery headquarters and took them on tours, all of us. And I have been really proud of Councilmember Harris for shepherding it all this time. And there've been many challenges, and he never gave up on it. We're way too far down the road to bicker over $700,000 a year CDBG money. In my humble opinion, that's an easy yes. But taking the opportunity tonight to hear from people like Vice Mayor Warren and Council... I mean, Vice Mayor Hanson and Councilmember Warren, and sort of really hear their concerns is extremely important, especially for you as the developer, to understand our expectations of you are very high. We're trying to do something extraordinary here. But we're also not a one-act team, right? We're doing lots of things in our city, and this is one of them. And we're not going to tie every resource we have to it. We're going to hold you accountable. But for me, this is an easy yes because we made a much bigger commitment than $700,000 a year in CDBG when we said yes to the promised zone and when we said yes to Twin Rivers. And for God's sakes, we already took down the trees. We have to raise the land and finish that project. So... And I just thanks to everybody who's in the audience sitting through this tonight and chiming in. You can see it's really helpful to hear your voices. My two cents, for what it's worth.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Ashby. Councilmember Geta.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I think this issue has become very critical because CDBG funds affect and help those in our community that have the biggest challenges. And I know personally, in my council district, we've been working to try to get CDBG funds for two very dangerous intersections on Logan Street, both on Lemon Hill and Eldrick Creek, of which, two months ago, on those same dangerous intersection, we had a grandmother who was run over while she was walking with her granddaughter. And it's in areas like this where there isn't any other development happening, and we need public dollars to make critical infrastructure improvements, is why I think this question about how much of our CDBG funds are being tied up is so critical. It's just about the infrastructure. That's what we're talking about today.
That's all.
Just about the infrastructure. But that's the concern, that a quarter of our CDBG dollars would be tied up with this project. And we... And with this, yes, with this Twin Rivers project. I think some of the comments that were made about, well, we wouldn't be moving the tracks, you know, why would we put the costs in these tracks of the light rail station and these improvements out there with this project? We wouldn't even be spending that dollars, those dollars, but for this project. And in other developments, when we are creating a new development, we wouldn't be making a new intersection or an off-ramp without that project. So the concerns here is that we can't discount the true cost. I mean, I think we need to be upfront. And I think what Councilmember Chenier had mentioned was, let's just give us the facts. And I wasn't here in the prior iterations, but I think the frustration you hear, and at least from me, is that there is a big trade-off when there are needs throughout the city. This is a critical project, one that I think everyone here, no one has said we don't need. One that I think has been aggressive and we've been moving forward. But again, I feel that the questions of have we done our due diligence to find every other resources so we don't have to tap into our CDBG dollars that are much needed in many of our communities where there isn't any other resource? That, I think, to me, is a concern. I mean, I was almost in the... On the camp of saying, I don't feel comfortable locking in a quarter of our projects just for this one area. You know, listening, I think, to Councilmember Warren's comments and Councilmember Harris' comments about, you know, the construction and what do we got to move forward, and really pushing on this, I think gives me more ease about moving forward. And the fact that we need housing. Fact that we do need housing. You know, we could, again, be very parochial about wanting to make sure everybody gets their fair piece. But the bigger point is, have we exhausted every avenue? And I only really have one question here that I'd like to know. I mean, if, you know, it seems to me that, you know, this... Either this is low-hanging fruit or we still have more research to do. But if state funding or other funds were to become available, could you or would you even look back at using other funds and moving the CDBG dollars back into our available circulation? I mean, to me, that, I think, is the question. Because if not, I'm getting the threat here of, we're going to lose $30 million if we don't vote today. And that, to me, I don't like being put in that position.
Well, one of the things, I just want to make sure it's very clear, is that, yes, we did exhaust all the options and applied for many grants, and were unfortunately not successful. And we're still aggressively pursuing all of those things. And what we want to do is to go ahead and get this started so that we can have something to start drawing down, but still continue to look for funding as it becomes available because we understand the fungibility of CDBG and how it's used within the council districts, and that it's a very precious resource. It would be ideal to match it with other infrastructure financing that comes available, which we will continue to do. So we're not going to not look for additional resources. This is to go ahead, get us started, and to guarantee that we can move forward, but then also look at those other sources that become available.
If we find other mechanisms, or say, I mean, a new governor comes in and there's a new infrastructure financing mechanism that comes in, would we be able to tap into or look or be able to move these dollars back into circulation?
Absolutely. And HUD... HUD gives you that ability to do that and pay from different sources. So they don't lock us in to say, we must use CDBG. Absolutely not.
Well, that makes me feel a lot easier with moving forward on this because I think, I mean, the uniqueness of the... And also the scarcity that may occur with these funds under this administration is the issue. When we're just trying to do one thing, which is fund just the infrastructure. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I feel much more comfortable in moving with the project. No one, I think, here is questioning the project. I think it's about the choices and what the trade-offs are with other areas in the city too.
Which your question, I think, Councilmember elicited, and it's been sort of said a few times, but it really, the CDBG funding is like a placeholder loan in a way. Now, it may have to be committed for the entire time, but the minute, the month, the year, we're able to find other funding, state, federal, or local funding to replace it, we have that option and ability to do so.
But our vote today, we have to... We're also basically saying, if we don't...
If we don't, you're committing the CDBG money. Absolutely. Okay, very good. Vice Mayor Hanson.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to clean up a couple things here real quick. First of all, I think that we're supposed to be watchdogs, and I'm really proud of the conversation we're having tonight. A lot of times, these public projects, they grow and cost so much that we just accept it as a sunk cost, this whole sunk-cost fallacy, that we should just keep putting money in because we put money in before. But Tyrone, you questioned me on my math, and I did the math. Madam Clerk, can you put the overhead? And I can, thanks to my calculator, divide the number of units here. $310 million is the total cost of the project. By 470 units, that includes 135 market-rate units. That's $636,000. Amenities, all in. If we subtract the market-rate units, which normally would pay for their own infrastructure costs, like McKinley Village did, or any of the other market-rate projects that have high infrastructure costs, the 352 affordable housing units, which includes the 218 replacement units, brings us to 881 per affordable housing unit, based on that. If we take out the infrastructure costs, per your own calculations given by the agency to me and my staff, it comes to $242.8 million. That's how much the pure housing cost is. For the 487 units, that's $581,000 a unit. For just the 352 affordable units, that is $690,000 a unit. So I wasn't very good at arithmetic in grade school, but thankfully I have calculators. And this is the math. And you can dispute the numbers, but the calculator doesn't lie. And the only thing I really want to say is that, while I appreciate the developer putting in $3 million, a condo at the Sawyer costs more than $3 million. The whole Sawyer itself costs about half as much as this project. The number of units that we give up by choosing to put money here could be equal to or greater than for a small amount of this, units in District 7, District 8, District 6, District 5, District 4, 3, 2, 1. We could get many units when we're doing gap financing for the amount of money we're talking about. So I don't want us to act as if Councilmember Warren's point, which I thought was one of the most important made at this dais in a very long time, that at some point, the units will not justify the cost. That is absolutely true. And for me, I have not heard a strong plan from the agency or from the developer. And, Mr. Developer, I appreciate the risk that you take. I would like to see more skin in the game from you. And from an agency standpoint, I realize we're talking about CDBG tonight, but we're talking about it as a project whose costs have skyrocketed and I believe are out of control. And this council should be trying to rein that in so we can get more housing units for the same amount of money.
Very well said. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I mean, I agree, and as I mentioned before, I'm concerned about the overall cost of the project. I'm also concerned that we don't have a clear path to do the housing portion of it once we get through the infrastructure. But I think that Councilmember Ashby really framed it up pretty well. Part of this is communication from SHRA in terms of educating the council members about where this project is going. I'm probably closer to it than most of the members here. You know, I went down and saw McCormick Baron Project down in the city. I've spent a fair amount of time with members of the company. I personally have a lot of confidence in them as a developer. But I do think that we have to have a more robust discussion, an open discussion with SHRA, about the overall cost of this project. Because ultimately, whether we dispute it or not, there is a per-door cost in the end. And you can back out the RT station, that's fine. There is a cost per door, and it should be relatively commensurate with the market today. And the market today is pretty high, you know? Labor costs are really high, and so are material costs. So, you know, we have to be realistic about it going forward. All those things considered, we do have a motion and a second on the floor, and I'm getting pretty ready to call the question.
Well, some of us have... And the mayor, who's waited to speak as well. So we'll call the question in just a moment, I'm sure. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. I just want to make sure I got my facts together. Because my question is, what happens if we do nothing? And I don't think I want to really look at the option of doing nothing because if we do nothing, the housing that we need, we're not focused on the 487 houses, affordable houses and market-rate houses. We'd be also talking about forfeiting $30 million, correct? And we'd be talking about eliminating a critical transformation project. So when I think about what we've done in the past, you know, we've focused on projects that have been really transformational here in the city of Sacramento. And I could go about naming them, but the one that comes to mind that had the biggest impact in a community much like this community has been the Franklin Villa Project. And we see the difference that that made in that community. So when Councilmember Ashby talks about the reading scores and the high poverty and the lack of employment and all those things, we've been able to make a significant difference in a project like Franklin Villa by making the investment and turning that into a project that we can all be proud of. And I'm looking forward to doing something like that now. I don't know if Vice Mayor Hanson's numbers are correct or not. I would ask SHRA to go back and make sure that the numbers are right and they don't lie, and the calculator is as accurate as we know it to be. But I don't want to talk about those numbers right now as much as I want to talk about the process that we're going through. So if I heard you correctly when you first came up, this is... We've exhausted all of the opportunity to get funding other than the CDBG money that we're looking at right now, correct?
For now.
For now.
Now, yes.
But that doesn't mean that if we make this commitment, that you won't continue to go after additional funding that could then turn around and bring the CDBG money back into the city's coffers, correct?
That's correct.
And I guess the question everybody here is asking of you and the team is, how confident are you in your ability to be able to make that happen?
Well, I think that, given our success in getting the promised zone and the choice, and even prior to that, two planning grants, we've been very successful at the federal level. Where we are experiencing challenges is at the state level. And having other cities consistently be in a position to receive funding while we were unsuccessful. Our goal is to really change our position and our influence and our understanding of state financing projects to really be able to benefit at the local level. And so we will continue...
You might talk to me a little bit about that, Tyrone. I know we've had some talks about this, you know? And I know you're now applying for another grant through my bill, the Cap and Trade Climate Change Program through the Strategic Growth Council. Is that for this project?
Yes.
It's for this project as well. You've talked about all this. I mean, you've got a new, relatively new mayor here who had a job over there at one point in time. Our region has been woefully unorganized and not very successful when it comes to cap and trade and when it comes to those other state opportunities. With Councilmember Chenier now leading SECOG and me in this seat, we have an opportunity now to be much more assertive and aggressive, and we are. I mean, you look at homelessness, for example. The Big 11, which I'm chairing, is actually... The Assembly has taken up our proposal practically word-for-word as their conference vehicle in the budget. We can do so much better on this grant stuff at the state level than what we've done. It's a new day if we seize it.
In addition to that, as Congress is looking at how they're restructuring financing, the idea of benchmark projects is being discussed more and more. And we have the total support of our Congresswoman Doris Matsui and others who are looking at this project moving forward. So we are positive. I have to say this.
I have to say this, of all of the teams, if there is a competitive application that can and will be put together, it will come from SHRA, and we are committed to doing whatever we need to do. Compliment our staff in any way that it needs to be complimented. The amount that we spent on that AHC is staggering, but we took it on because we knew that it was important. Our commitment continues and will be continued.
Good. Next question.
So I have the same amount of confidence in SHRA and the team that's there as well. And I know that it will not, that it's going to happen, and that because of the effort that you will put in place, that you will help to make it happen. I have that level of confidence. I have so much confidence in that I'm willing to put my share of the CDBG money on the table for my district, because I believe in this project so highly. I was one who actually worked in that project and worked with many of the residents who are here and have seen what took place there over the past 10 years. This is a project that needs to happen, not only for the citizens that are there, but for the city of Sacramento. It's a major transformational project, and it needs to take place. And so I'm willing to make that investment in the 487 houses. I'm willing to make that investment for all the people who have lived there, who will have the opportunity to come back and live in a better way than they've ever lived before, and to be able to improve their education, improve their workforce development, to be able to move into the workplace. I'm willing to make that sacrifice, and I'm ready to vote yes on the item.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. Tyrone, when you and LaShelle came to my office to brief me on this, I had no idea we would tie ourselves up in the knots like this. I was looking at this strictly as an infrastructure home and something that we needed to do in order to secure the $30 million that we fought so hard to get, and it seemed like pretty much a no-brainer. Time is of the essence. That's why you haven't been able to cobble together other sources of revenue. You will continue to work to make sure that that happens. The question is, will we get, to answer some of the issues that have been raised, at what point will we get another bite of the apple on the design to be able to cost it out, see what we're getting for the money that we're paying? And I know you, I don't blame you for not coming prepared for that tonight, because this was an infrastructure issue. So at what point will we get to take a look at the design of the project and to be able to, someone to be able to justify the cost of that design?
Can you come back with that? Good. They'll come back with it. Not tonight.
I mean, Clerk, are you asking for a particular timeframe or just will, is that possible? The answer is yes, is it possible? If you're asking for, are you requesting a timeframe where we come back before you? Is that a question?
Yes.
Well, we are working with city staff now on Phase 1. I think it's entitled and is out to bid. So from that standpoint, Phase 1 is at a point where we're ready to build. But clearly, we hear you, and what we say, what, 90 days? I don't want to push us in a corner, but we want to respond.
I think it would be important for us as we move forward and find out exactly the application that is pending before the Strategic Growth Council, which we will hear back in June, that that would be an appropriate time for us to then come back and talk about the project and where we are and give the updates, so following when we'll hear in June, so probably July.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Less comments. So just a few things to try to sum this up. First of all, I really, first of all, thank you to the staff and the SHRA staff. You've done your work really hard. You're trying to put the pieces together. I do think that, well, a couple of things. One, I want to compliment the city council tonight, because I, as Vice Mayor Hanson said, I think this is exactly the kind of discussion we need to be having in public session about public resources. You know, frankly, my first year and a half here, we spend a lot of time listening to a lot of angry folks come on up, and those are sort of my most vivid memories. I want to remember tonight, because this is exactly what we ought to be doing. You ought to be asking the hard questions, as you have, and you guys, because it's your job, ought to be put to the test here. The cost, the housing cost does bother me, as Vice Mayor Hanson put it out. And I want to ask, is there still the potential of working to bring those costs down before we begin construction of all those replacement units? Or are those numbers now set in stone?
Those numbers are not set in stone, because this is a multi-phase project. Every single phase comes back before you for review.
So I asked the question earlier about, it's not just pride of authorship. In 2014, I authored the Cap and Trade Investment Plan my last year in the Senate. It dedicates 35% of all future cap and trade dollars to housing and affordable housing and transit-oriented development. And I'm sorry, you kind of glossed over it a little bit. You've had a very good niche with the federal government under a different administration, presidential administration, but we've got to do much better, and you need to do much better, please, when it comes to aggressively going after a lot of the state money that's available, especially during surplus time, when there's a lot of one-time money available for infrastructure. So the cap and trade application that you mentioned a moment ago from my 2014 bill, what is the amount of that application?
The previous application?
Oh, this one, the current one.
I think it's $20 million.
$20 million, and would that offset the cost of the infrastructure, or would that help subsidize the housing itself?
No, that's primarily the housing.
That's the housing. So that $20 million, if we were to get it, would bring down the per-door cost, at least of local financing. I think as you report back to Councilmember Carr and all of us, you might report back on how Vice Mayor Hanson's chart would be different in terms of per-door cost if we get that $20 million cap and trade amount. And let's all go after that together. We ought to get that. Last point, and this is the main point I want to make tonight before we cast a vote. This is, I'm going to support this tonight, because I think the opportunity is before us. This is about, as Councilmembers Ashby and Jennings said, this is about low-income people. We are talking about extending the economic renaissance to our neighborhoods. We need to be true to our word. We have an opportunity in front of us. You've drawn around $30 million of federal money. We go for it. But here is the problem, and I hope we can see this clearly over the weeks ahead, I'm pre-lobbing here for other matters soon to be defined and discussed. Why is it that we are always in a position in Sacramento where we have to be ultra-creative and look under every stone and borrow from one source in order to find a way to finance that which is essential for our community and our neighborhoods? Why is it? Why don't we have our own source of ongoing capital? Why do we have a housing trust fund that is $2.5 million at most? I've actually heard two different numbers, and I'm not sure what it is, whether it's $800,000 or $2.5 million, enough to build, to subsidize 15 units in this entire city? When are we going to get serious about defining our own destiny in this city and establishing and funding our own source of ongoing capital for all the things that we want to do, need to do, and must do to help our constituents, no matter where they live? Are we all about Sacramento and all about all of our constituents, or is it just? Because I got to tell you, Steve Hanson talks to me every single week rightfully about Marina Vista and Alder Grove. Where's that in the, where's that on the waiting list? What about all the projects in South Sacramento? Councilman Carr, what about North Sacramento? What about that comprehensive library that we want to build for North Sacramento? Where are all those projects? I'll tell you where they are. They're in long waiting lists, because we do one heroic thing at a time to make something good happen, and then we just hope we can, you know, find another way the next time with long intervals between these advances. I'm tired of it in this city, and it's about time we start thinking differently, we start acting differently, and we create the capital on the housing front, on the jobs front, on the youth front, to be able to better define our destiny instead of having to borrow from CDBG for 20 years with the thought maybe we'll replace it later down the line when we find a better source. We want to grow up this city for everybody? Well, let's grow it up. I'm an a-vote. Let's call the roll, please, individually.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashby. Councilmember Warren. Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hanson. Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Yara.
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier.
Aye.
Seven to two vote?
Seven to two vote.
Seven to two vote.
Seven to three. Six to three.
I'm sorry. I needed the calculator. Yeah.
So a six to three vote, Councilmember Chenier, Councilmember Warren, and Vice Mayor Hanson were noes.
Very good. Okay. Great debate. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to acknowledge the other residents of Twin Rivers who came out tonight. If they're still in the chamber, could you all please stand and be recognized?
Well, for coming tonight and being patient with our process here. We really appreciate it.
And we will be having the Promise Zone celebration tomorrow. All of you all have gotten information about that, and we look forward to you all participating in the celebration. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Appreciate it. Let's move to the next item, the 700 block of K Street, please.
All right. Hi, Christine.
Hi. Good evening. Christine Weicher from Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, and I have a very brief presentation tonight. Developers CFY and DNS are close to completing a mixed-use development located at 700 K Street. Improvements include construction of 137 units, 84 of which will be affordable to low and very low-income residents. In 2014, your board approved issuance of mortgage revenue bonds and over $10 million to finance the development, but due to construction delays, the project was not able to meet its bond expenditure deadline of December 31, 2017. To avoid a loss of over $8 million of tax credits and to allow the extension of the construction loan needed to complete the project, modifications to the bond deadlines are required. Tonight, staff is requesting your approval to execute documents allowing for the bond modifications, and we will return on June 26 to hold a hearing to issue new bonds. Tonight, CFY and DNS, excuse me, representatives are here with us, and we can answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much for the concise presentation. Normally, because it's in my district, I would punch up, and we only have one other council member speaking, so I'll make a motion that we approve the item. This has been a heroic effort to deliver the 700 block. So, thank you. Cyrus, Pat, Bay, Steve, Leslie, thank you all for your hard work as well, and thank you, Christine. Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you. I just want to third Vice Mayor Hanson's comment or request or whatever movement, motion. But I wanted to take the opportunity to say that this project is like Teflon. This is the project we are so hell-bent to get across the finish line. It actually predates every single member of this council, including me. But I'm really proud of SHRA. I'm really proud of the development team. It has outlived everything that tried to kill it, redevelopment laws, everything, you name it. This thing has, it is a survivor, this project, and I'm really proud of it. And I'm really proud of SHRA for finding a way and taking a leadership role here, and for Cyrus and Bay, and of course, Ali, and all of their hard work to get it this far. And it's encouraging and exciting, and I can't wait. And I know this next year will be the most exciting year of all for that project, as we watch things open and watch people move items in. It's going to be really fun. So very rewarding to those of you who've worked on this since day one. Again, I will never forget the day that Bay and Ali got the keys to this location. I swear they were going to have a sleepover in there. They were so excited, and it has just never lost that energy, has it, Vice Mayor?
I think the move-in starts this week or weekend, and so the sleepover can be official.
Yeah, when's the first person? Oh, my gosh, that's so exciting. Anyway, congratulations to you, Vice Mayor, and really good job ushering this across about 800 hurdles, so more than excited to vote for this tonight. Great work on your part, LaShelle, you and your team. Christine, I know you moved mountains for this one. Good work.
All right. All in favor? Oh, sorry, Mr. Harris, I didn't realize you had punched up.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Bay and Cyrus, I just want to thank you. Tough project. You guys know how to work tax credits, and that's a really good thing. You're bringing home a very nice project, so full steam ahead. Thanks a lot.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, unanimous vote. Congratulations. Next item.
This is the Gang Prevention Intervention Grant Program Outcomes. I want to turn it over to Councilmember Jennings to frame it up, and then we'll hear from Khalid and our staff.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. We've been focused on the Gang Intervention and Prevention Task Force for a while now, and every year, we like to come and bring the outcomes of what we've been able to accomplish. And I think it's very important for this council and the public to know the work that we've done, the partnerships that we've developed, and the success that we've had along the way as long as the opportunities that we have for the future. So we have community members that are here as well. We have Dr. Newburger who's here, and we're going to share with you some of the outcomes in the first, in this year of 2017.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. Khalid Mottaki with the City Manager's Office. As Councilmember Jennings said, we're here to give you an annual report on the Gang Prevention Intervention Grant Program. This report is the first report that includes a full year of activities compared to the report that we gave last year, which in essence rolled out a nine-month pilot program. We are very fortunate to have a partnership with the County Office of Education, who brings their expertise and credentials, and have actually developed tools specifically for this program. And when we started this two years ago, council gave us direction to make sure there was a level of accountability, make sure there was, our investments were being made wisely, and that's why we contracted with SCOWI as an external evaluator to do that. And we've been building it as we go. We feel more confident now that we have some tools in place that gives us that level of accountability, and want to bring that forward. We have partnered with 21 amazing agencies in our community. They've done an array of services and really engaged in this work with a level of passion, commitment, and really determination in trying to reach a group of young people and families that quite often are not easy to reach and engage. And we're lucky to have these communities, excuse me, community-based organizations as partners. And lastly, before I hand it over to Dr. Newburger to handle the presentation, since it's her findings, we are finally starting to see a downtick in violent crime within these neighborhoods. 2015 and 2016, we saw a significant increase in violent crime, and now in 2017, which this report is targeting, we are starting to see it trickle down in some of the violent crime. And so far in 2018, that continues. Now, this report is not here to propose that there's a direct causation with that, but I'll say with a certain level of human certainty that the investments that the city has made is definitely having a positive impact on those underserved neighborhoods that we're trying to reach. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Newburger to do the report.
Dr. Newburger, welcome.
Thank you. So first of all, I'd like to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to really share the work of the 21 grantees that contributed to the benefit of Sacramento City. We have a number of grantees in our audience, and some had left earlier, they couldn't stay, but we just wanted to, again, thank you for this opportunity. So as Khalid mentioned, this report is just accumulation of this year's activity so far for the grantees. The grant had been extended for another six months, so the final report won't be available until the summertime, but we wanted to present you with some preliminary results. So what you see on the screen are the 2007 grantees. They provided services to youth and to supporting adults in the areas of mentoring, personal growth, family support, tutoring, and intervention services. In the big picture, these 21 grantees provided almost 75,000 direct service hours to almost 4,000 youth. support, tutoring, and intervention services. In the big picture, these 21 grantees provided almost 75,000 direct service hours to almost 4,000 youth. They empowered family and community members. Because although the grant focused on youth, it also provided services to adults who could either benefit from those programs or could provide strategic prevention and intervention services to youth as well. As we look at our youth participants, we see that they are a diverse group. We know that they are primarily our African-American and our Hispanic youth that are at risk for gang involvement. The grant framework targeted five major geographic areas. As you can see from the graph, Valley High and Meadowview were the areas that received, that served the largest percentage of youth. However, I want you to know that our grantees extended beyond those areas of need and also serviced youth that were located in the CD Circle, South Natomas areas, as well as youth in our youth detention facility. The programs that our youth participated in were primarily life skills and cognitive development. This might have included crisis management, critical thinking, mentoring and leadership, followed by school-based support, where they received tutoring, college visits, academic plans, and really helping them think about their future. Eight percent of our youth that participated were gang-involved or hardcore, and they're a very difficult population to reach and service. They don't trust necessarily everybody. They're afraid of being identified as gang members. So, really, reaching out to this group is important. Our services were also provided primarily to youth under the age of 18. But understanding that young adults are equally at risk and in need of services, a number of our agencies served those that were over the age of 18 as well. As we've mentioned before, the 21 agencies really provide a diverse array of services, from young, from very young children to young adults in a variety of areas. And it's really difficult to capture the work that they all do in this report, other than to try and quantify the service areas, the regions, and really to stay true to the intent of the grant, and to show that they are being accountable to the work that they provided. So, what we added this year was a youth survey and a support role participant survey. The youth survey was completed so far by 931 youth, and these are the preliminary results. In the reports that you already received, you'll see the extended version of the charts. But I really wanted to highlight some of the findings here. So, these snapshots show that just over 60% of the youth feel safe in their neighborhood, but that nearly half of them also hear gunshots in their neighborhood. A substantial proportion also have somebody that's a gang member that's in their family or was a gang member, and they have friends that are gang members. So, there's really two major findings I want you to take away from this slide. Finding number one is that safety is relative. We have a large percentage of youth who report feeling safe in their neighborhood, even though their neighborhoods aren't necessarily safe. The second finding is that this data validates that we are accessing and providing services to the right population of at-risk youth. All of the risk factors say that if you don't have somebody to go to, and you don't have someplace safe to be, that you're much higher risk to become a gang member or involved with a gang.
True.
So, some additional findings from our youth survey were that we found out that 75% of them helped youth understand the risks of gang involvement. We also found out that it helped them provide a safe place to be after school. And again, safety is a key With this survey, not only did we measure attitudes and beliefs, but we really wanted to change, to measure change. So, this shows some demonstrated shifts in beliefs. Part of those showed that 31% of our participants believed it was okay to have friends that are in a gang. But after participating in the program that they were with that grantee, that dropped down to 23%. We also have fewer that now believe it's okay or that you'll be respected if you're a gang member. Now, we're only going to see small shifts. And why are we not going to see large shifts? Because think back to the prior slide where you had 40% of them that had a family member that was at one time a gang member or friends that were in gangs. So, this is really a difficult concept. You have people that you love and you trust that are in areas that provide risk to you. Now, as we know, you can't just fix somebody just by providing a service and saying, well, there you feel empowered to move forward. You really need to provide wraparound services. So, what we have here is a number of grantees that provided services to what we call adults in support roles. And really, their goal was to build external layers of support services to youth. And they were able to provide over 15,000 direct service hours to nearly 2,000 support role participants. And these are really a strong investment in your community. They provided crisis response to families who are impacted by gang violence. It helped reduce isolation in individuals, and it worked to build community connectedness across the areas. Along with the reports that our grantees are expected to provide, we asked them to evaluate their own programs. And one of our crossover programs pulled this out of their data, and I thought it was really an important finding. They said that only 50% of the participants in their program felt that they could talk to their parents about gangs. And this really, again, underscores the need for community, family, and education supports to provide healthy mentors in their lives, to give them an opportunity to receive wraparound services to help prevent gang intervention and involvement. So, we had some of our grantees that we were hoping could speak tonight, but we're just going to go ahead and share with you some of their success stories. So, you can see that these successes not only help youth develop character or to help families receive support while they're dealing with gang-related trauma. The last one also says, it helped me stand the right path and to be a role model to others. So, we're not only servicing our youth in that capacity, but we're helping them to serve others. Now, with these successes come challenges. It's not easy to access the gang-involved youth, and some of our grantees experienced challenges with facilities and locations of services. Some of them found that there were fluid partnerships or that they might be able to serve the students in the youth detention facility, only to find out that there are tremendous barriers to be able to access youth in our detention facility. So, knowing these things and learning what we did this past year, we have several recommendations that we would consider for the following grant proposal. The first is that we would consider perhaps an extended grant cycle. It's really difficult for some of our grassroots organizations to get up and running after a year, hire really competent staff, and get the programs in place, only to find out that the funding gets cut off. If we were to provide a two- or three-year grant cycle, I think it could benefit the programs and the youth in it. It'd be difficult to provide services to a community and then suddenly take those away because the grant funding ended. The other thing we want to consider is perhaps flexibility in the start date. If you have programs that want to offer summer services, the grant needs to perhaps start in September or start as early as May. So, that way, that summer block falls with, the funding cycle falls within the summer that the services are supposed to be rendered. We'd also like to recommend that you consider giving greater consideration to applicants who plan to serve gang-impacted youth and families. It's really difficult, but necessary, to access this. So, investing in our agencies that can support this work is important. And the last thing we wanted to know that we've been working on and will continue to work on is we want to build up the capacity of our community-based partners to help them be more competitive for future grants, to help them have clearer measures of their success in their work, and to help us evaluate the strengths of the program in the long run. So, that's what we have to present tonight. Did you have any questions? Comments?
Comments from members. Thank you for the thorough, very thorough evaluations and the success stories. We know these are dollars well spent. Councilmember Ashby. Or is it Rick first?
Want me to go, Rick?
Go, go.
I'll be very quick. I just wanted to say, I see Rachel Minnick in the crowd, who runs Reading Partners. And were it up to me, we would just write her a really, really big check and have her continue to do everything amazing that she does to help with literacy in this city. She's one of my favorite people in Sacramento. But I love that she came and sat through this whole council meeting just to be here, to hear this presentation. I don't think there's anyone doing more than her in Sacramento to help the plight of young people and to get people on track in every community across the entire region. So, I just wanted to take the moment to say thank you to you, Rachel, for everything you do.
Thank you, Rachel. That's very good. We do have a number of people who want to testify. Would you like to wait? Let's go, let's do that first. I should have mixed and matched here. Okay. Go ahead.
I have seven speakers for this item. The first is Patrice Hill, Gina Robertson, Amani Lucas, then David Nelson.
Y'all together? Do you want to all come up at one time? I mean, take?
Oh, they are. A little done. My name is Patrice Hill. I'm program coordinator of Sacramento Area Youth Speaks. We are grantee of the funding. With our funding, we started an elective class at Luther Burbank High School that runs every day of the week. And we have upwards of 50 young people that we serve between two in-class periods. I don't want to take much time. But this funding, I want the young people to use a little bit of time that we have. These are all young people in the class that have been in the class. Data from the class has shown an increase in attendance, an increase in GPA. And I'll just, I'll let the young people use the rest of the time. Go ahead. Just give us some.
Hello. I'm Destiny Green, and I am in the SES class. I've been in the class since last year, since they first came to Burbank. And I have to say that this class has really impacted my life in general, in school and outside of school. And I feel like, living in the community I live in, a lot of us don't get our voices heard as much as other kids. And I feel like this class has really given us a voice. And our other, and we talk about things that in other classes we are not really allowed to talk about because it may cause controversy in the classroom. But we are able to just speak our minds and feel how we feel. And I think that every student in Sacramento should be able to have the opportunity to have their voices heard and have their feelings shared.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. You're very articulate.
I'm Marsha Jackson. I've been in the Youth SES program since last year. It's helped me tremendously because I used to not like school. Like, it was like, I'm a big person on who I am. I like, I love being a black person, a black youth. So, like, stuff that I was being taught was not necessarily about my culture, my history. So, I didn't find school interesting because none of the stuff was about who I was as a person. I'm learning about different people, and it's like, I can't really relate to that. But the Youth SES program, it opened up a lot about my culture and other people's cultures also, but my culture especially. And it helped me, like, have a voice. And with that, like, I feel like everybody should have that kind of, like, not just African-American kids, but everybody should have that kind of voice. And the SES program, it allows everybody, like, brown, black, anybody who wants to have a voice, to have a voice. So.
Thank you. It's great.
Good evening. Hi. My name is Elizabeth Yang. I'm a sophomore at Luther Burbank High School. I've been a part of SES Project Hills for about two years now. Being in the class had really helped me improve throughout those school years and with things at home. This class helped me grow a lot. It made me a stronger person. It helped me get a clear vision of what life is really about. It honestly helped me to become a better person. And being in SES Project Hills, I found my voice, and now I'm heard. When you're from a community like where I'm from, it's hard to be heard. Being in this class helped me know that, helped me know what I was worth, and helped me grow to become a bigger person. I think there should be more classes like this throughout Sacramento to help our communities. I believe that SES Project Hills will really benefit and impact our youth community.
Thank you. Great job.
I'm Dante Howe. I'm a junior at Luther Burbank. And I've only been in this SES Hill program for only, just this year. And it's helped me stay off the street and not be too focused on anything else except for my working class.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know we went over time, but I just want to emphasize that this class is for young people who have behavior issues, attendance issues, might be on behavior contracts or are on a trajectory to dropout. We've seen significant improvements all across the board. And we use a lot of culturally relevant curriculum that focuses on youth development and civic engagement. And so, we are just very thankful for the funding, and we hope we continue to receive it, and we hope y'all approve the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shanier.
I just want to say something really quickly. First of all, thank you for what you're doing. And to all these young people, you are incredibly articulate and will go far, and it's very much appreciated. I just want to go back. We know what the research says about adult-student relationships and how important those are in youth development. We know about youth voice. We know about youth engagement. All of the things that you're doing are what we need to do for all kids in this city. And so, I just want to say thank you. It's a great example of what we should be doing, of what every young person deserves in their life. And to be able to find your voice is something that we, as adults, need to be responsible to support you in doing that. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I just want to say, I want to say thank you, too. I haven't visited your program yet. I would very much like to.
You're welcome. We're having an open house on June 6, 1 o'clock, at Luther Burbank. So, we'll make sure you all get that information.
And this, please send us an invitation, please.
Definitely.
Thank you.
I'll give you my card.
Councilman Gettle, do you want to speak now?
Before Patrice gets off the, you know, she knows that I can't let her get away without saying that, you know, I appreciate. She's been, for over 15, 16 years that I've known her, she's been helping young people find her voice. And she's, and if you, yeah, since she was five, yeah. And, you know, and if you haven't, she has a collection of poems that a lot of her, the students that she's mentored has put together. And they're just so impactful. I remember reading one from Hiram Johnson. But they're from different high schools throughout. But thank you, Patrice, because you've been helping people find their voice for a long time.
It's my pleasure. Thank you, Eric.
Patrice, our job needs to be to help you find ways to expand what you're doing.
I agree. I agree.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Let's get to the next.
We appreciate you.
Our next speaker is Gina Robertson, then Amani Lucas, then David Nelson. Gina?
I think Gina might have been in the group there.
Amani Lucas. David Nelson.
Mr. Nelson, you have two minutes. Welcome.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Hello to all the council members. Good to see you today. I'm here representing Hawk Institute. I'm one of our mentors. It is a leadership program. We teach and mentor our students in regards to family and social life, academic and career preparation, as well as personal finance so that they're able to sustain themselves. We serve in some of Sacramento's most troubled neighborhoods, three high schools, to include Luther Burbank, American Legion High School, as well as North. We hold Saturday Academy classes at Fruit Ridge's Community Collaborative. I personally was touched by one of the points that shows that a lot of our students have experienced, their family members suffering from gang violence. And me personally experiencing that with my sister, that's one of my motivations. That's one of our great motivations, is to help guide these students from gang violence. I've personally seen a lot of our young students go from having a lot of their pride and their identity anchored in their neighborhood and their gang ties. And I've seen those same students through our program turn that identity and those ambitions into finishing a trade program, for example, and starting a career there, or going into community college in order to go into whatever major they have. There's a particular story that touched me. There was a young man, about 18 years old, coming from a gang-ridden neighborhood. And he decided to go out on his own. I met this man downtown. At this point, after being mentored, I'm trying to keep this short, he finished at community college, earned his AA degree. We helped him to get a scholarship. He now goes to UCLA, and he's considering a law degree. That's not one of the only touching things, but it's when we went to celebrate.
That's the only negative thing you've said. Just kidding. As a lawyer myself. It's a lawyer joke.
When we attended the celebration for this great, this great accomplishment, it was great to see how, I mean, we were motivated ourselves by him. But it was great to see all the young men around him that came to visit and celebrate in the park, and to see that it sparked something in them. So, I just, I'm just here to support the budget, and we just appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming and sharing the story.
Yes, sir. I've visited Hawk Institute. It's run, started by Richard Nelson. Richard Nelson, for a long time, owned the bookstore at the airport. And his daughter was killed right before Christmas at the shootout at the Slab Barber Shop. And she was there to take a Christmas picture with her son. And when the shootout started, she jumped and over the backseat to shield her son from the bullets that were flying around. And she was killed. And Richard, in his anger, decided to focus it on something positive. He set through the trials and watched the young men who had been doing the shooting, and decided he was going to do something positive with that, and started the Hawk Institute. And they mentored both young women and men. And they mentored both young women and men now. And it was a pleasure to come out and speak with your students, a pleasure to look at the enthusiasm of all of the mentors, and we appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Very good. Let's take the rest of the testimony, please.
Our next speaker is Michael Lynch, then Rachel Minnick, and then a group from La Familia Counseling Center.
Good evening, Council Mayor. Michael Lynch, I'm the co-founder and chief executive officer of Improv Your Tomorrow. We help young men of color get to and through college. We serve about 650 young men across Sacramento County, some of the most challenging neighborhoods, Meadowview, Valley High, and a handful of others. And the Gang Prevention Task Force grant to us has been huge, you know? We started off in a really small, serving 17 young men of color at Valley High, where I grew up, and now 650. The grant has helped us, right, to build capacity and grow. One of the slides that Dr. Newberger had was about 50% of the young men hear gunshots in their neighborhood. A lot of our young men suffer from some form of PTSD. So, what we did with the grant was create a trauma-informed care program called IME to help our young men begin to develop the skills they needed, right, to focus in class. You know, when you, when you go to bed hearing gunshots, right, you know, when you witness, you know, your cousin gets shot, or, you know, killed, or your mom suffered from domestic abuse, you have all these trauma, right, that you go to school with on a daily basis. So, the grant really helped us to create a program, right, sustain it, and help our young men begin to heal from the trauma. We know it's not, you know, just a summer program, it's wraparound support and care. So, we truly support, right, the Office of Violent Prevention and what Khalid is doing, you know, because it helps not only programs like Improv Your Tomorrow, right, but really and truly helps to support the backbone of our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rachel Minnick, and then Brenda Adriana and Cesar from La Familia.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Rachel Minnick. I'm the executive director at Reading Partners Sacramento, proud District 6 resident. Javi's dad represent. And I really came tonight because I wanted to say thank you. I wanted to say thank you to the council, to Dr. Newberger, and to Khalid. Khalid and I have been talking about the importance of early literacy on public safety for a long time, probably five, six years now. And thank you, Councilmember Jennings, for bringing Khalid back to our community. Losing Khalid was not, not an ideal scenario, but we got him back, so thank you. Dr. Newberger showed that there were 75,000 hours of service given. 14,000 of those were Reading Partners. 14,000 tutoring hours were delivered to students in many of the communities that all of you talked about this evening, free of charge. So, this is one-on-one reading tutoring that these students are getting, their parents don't have to pay for, and it is changing their lives for the better. 80% of our students meet or beat their literacy goals every year. And this year, we're actually doing better, so I'm really excited about that. And I wanted to tell you about a student that was in our program in 2009, and I found him. And he told me how much Reading Partners had an impact on his life. He's now a sophomore at the Met Sacramento High School, and he just did a book drive for Reading Partners about two weeks ago. And I'm so proud of him, and I just want you to think about that when you think about the investments that you're making now, that in eight years, 10 years, these are the students who are successful because of what you've done. So, thank you for your wisdom and for your thought. This does not happen in other cities. Reading Partners has 14 regions. Sacramento is the only one that has the type of commitment from the city that we have here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
And the last speaker is a group from La Familia. That looks Brenda, Brenda Miranda, Ariana Valderrama, and Cesar Ortiz.
Welcome.
Hi. So, good evening, city council members. I'm mayor. My name is Brenda Miranda, and this is Adriana Valderrama, and we're case managers. And here on behalf of La Familia Counseling Center, Project Rural Program, which is funded through the Gang Prevention and Intervention Task Force. Project Rural offers positive alternative counseling and supportive services for at-risk youth ages 10 to 21, such as family and individual counseling, positive alternatives, supportive services for individual family counseling, sorry, home and school visits, recreational activities, assistance with homework, bullying prevention, mentoring, youth development activities, gang prevention, and dropout prevention. So, we would like to thank you for bringing these much-needed services to our neighborhoods. We're finishing our second year, and the program has solid results. At the end of last year, 87% of the youth who were enrolled in the program showed progress on their goals. This past year and a half, we have enrolled 90 youth, and found that many more youth have a need for services. To show you how much of an impact this funding has on youth, we have brought Cesar Ortiz with us to speak to you about his experience in the program.
Hello, my name is Cesar Ortiz. The reason I came to La Familia because I was lost, I didn't know what I wanted to do with my life. I was misbehaving at school and at home. La Familia became important to me because it helped me find a healthier resource for my anger and actions. My family was homeless, and they helped me look for a home. Well, often I would probably be in jail. They helped me find resources for, they helped you find resources for your problems. The staff don't treat you like lions, they treat you more like family. It benefited me because they actually listen to you and don't judge you. It helped you succeed. My counselor, Brenda, helped me a lot. At first, I didn't know what to do with my life. She helped me get, re-enroll into school, and my grades started to improve. Also, I had an internship that helped me provide for my family and get basic job skills. I don't see Brenda as a counselor, I see her more as a big sister I never had. She really cares about what you say and can connect, I can connect with her. She helped me with my, she helped me calm my anger, she opened my mind about all different jobs that there are. Also, the program had, had, also the program had field trips to UCD, UC Davis, and Sac State. This helped me see that I can go to college. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the, thank you for the, thanks for the strength to come on up here and express yourself. It's really great. Keep doing it, okay?
Thank you.
You did really good, and the more you do it, the better you do.
Thank you.
Okay?
So, thank you again, on behalf of La Familia, for bringing these opportunities to our communities and our youth.
Well, thank you to La Familia for all you do.
Thank you.
Heroic work. Thank you, guys. Okay. We have a couple members of the council to speak again. Councilmember Jennings, thank you for your leadership here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I do want to go last, but I want to bring up one more speaker, if I may, and he just didn't get his speaker card in because he doesn't know that that's the process we're supposed to do. But what he does know how to do is he knows how to impact kids in a major way. So, I want to bring up Omar Turner, to give him two minutes at the mic, tell the impact that he's having on kids, especially on the court, the basketball court, as well as off of the court. Omar?
Mr. Turner, welcome.
For this Raiders, just for you, really. I saw that.
The Las Vegas Raiders?
Ah, pretty soon, yeah. You're right, yeah. Just want to say thank you for the opportunity, just to share with you. My name is Omar Turner, and I run a program called Crossover. And we use sports to impact the lives of kids. And thinking about that, I'm thinking about a story of a kid that, the young man, we had went on this MLK walk that they have. And I was just getting to know the young man, and I saw this young lady kept coming up to our group. We had about 13 young men that had been part of our program. And she kept running up and back to this young man. And what had happened was, is I thought she was flirting with him, but it wasn't that. When we got to the convention center, it was a group of about 30 kids, ran up to our 13, and they were from another neighborhood. And what was going on is that, I guess they had been on the internet and had been conversating and had planned for this thing to happen. What I didn't know is that young man, brother, had got murdered by a gang member, and he was, I guess, from an opposite set. And there was a lot of anger in this young man. But we was able to diffuse the situation. It was crazy because one of the young men that was from the opposite youth that had came up, had recognized that we were part of Crossover. We have been doing this program for about 20 years, and because of that, it diffused. But I know I got to be quick, so that young man, fast-forwarding, that young man right now has got his grades together, he's not involved in gang violence anymore, and the young man right now is coaching one of our teams as a senior. He's become a mentor. And so, we're using Crossover to transform lives. Our whole motto is that we would like to see youth make a crossover in life. That's what we want to see happen. So, thank you, thank you for funding us. Thank you for everything that you do. We really appreciate you.
Thank you. All right. Kidding me? The thanks goes this way. Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you, Ray. Okay. So, we got Councilmember Schneer.
Great, thank you. I'll be quick for Omar. Thank you. We work with Omar in Oak Park and contract with him. He ran our tournament a couple weeks ago. We had 120 kids there all day long, which was just fabulous to see. Just a couple things I want to say. One is Khalid, I want to say thank you. I think you have worked hard over the years and have continually raised the quality of the programming that we're doing, and also raised the expectations among, for the grantees of what we want to achieve with the program. And I think that's reflected in the evaluation, and it's reflected by a lot of your grantees here who came to speak. So, I just want to say thank you. I know we've had some chats about how the program goes over the years, but I think it's all positive, and I'm really excited about it. I want to also just kind of repeat something I said at the Budget Committee this morning. And I want to, first, I want to thank the CBOs that came out, Rachel, and Hawk, and La Familia. And Hawk does a great job, you're right, through the American Legion as well. That, you know, as we invest in our community-based organizations in this city, and as we help to build their capacity to do the work that they're doing in the neighborhoods, we will all be better off. I think it's been really clear, and we have other programs as well, we mentioned these today, Creative Economy Grant, the money that's going out to $500,000 towards youth readiness and 21st century skills, the RAILS grant programs, where we have been very much oversubscribed in applications, but undersubscribed in money. But we know that the monies go far, that these community-based organizations can stretch every dollar in an amazing way, and that these are the organizations that are in the community, close to the community, and really, I think, knows, know what's best for the community in making those connections. We know, as I said before from the research, that the adult-student, adult-kid relationships is the most important factor in a young person's success. And by having and investing in our community-based organizations in our neighborhoods, again, helping them build capacity, it gives our young people a much better chance to be successful because those are the relationships that we really want to foster. We have great people working for the city, we have great people working for START and fourth R, and in all of our youth programs. And I, but I think these are not mutually exclusive, I think we have to do both. We have to continue doing the programs that we do, hold people accountable, use the youth development strategy that we adopted back in December, which is an underlying pinning for everything that we should be doing around the skills and capacities that our young people need to be successful. But also, again, really make a concerted effort as we move forward to heavily invest in our community-based organizations. They're the ones that I think are going to take us home, really, in the work that we're trying to do for young people. So, thanks very much. And Mr. Jennings, thank you for your leadership on all of this. I think it's been exemplary over the years, and continuing to move it forward.
Thank you, Jay. Eric?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. I think, you know, when I first came on the council, you talked about how critical this was, and picking it up after it had been forgotten. And I, I think that can't be forgotten, that we probably wouldn't be here if you hadn't wanted to be persistent in moving on this issue. And also, Khalid, thank you again also for all that you've been doing here. And even when the first iteration came out, and I said, "Don't forget about Fruit Ridge Manor, don't forget about Avondale." And I see Peggy Fabel back out there, and who's out there at the Elmo Slider Clubhouse, working with folk, with some of our youth out there, many who sometimes are coming out of, out of the juvenile hall system. And so, the fact that we have that activity and engaging with people and intervening with them is important, and also with La Familia out there. I think you guys have, not only are setting the example also about engaging youth, but even this weekend, the mayor and I and Councilmember Schneer were out there for also the importance of civic engagement, and how La Familia is now a voting center. And you can go there and even on the same day, register to vote and vote. But the fact that young people are also, are engaging in their own power and finding out that there's, there's power in voice and power in engagement at a center like that, that's critical. But I think, to echo what Councilmember Schneer just said, you know, big advocates of fourth R and START here, in many of those situations, there are able parents, or a parent, or someone who is able to get them involved and involved in those situations. And those, but some of these youth, some of the youth, they have literacy challenges. They, you know, aren't even around in places where they can get that kind of support. And yeah, that's why you need folks like Rachel Minnick. But they have some major trauma and PTSD issues. So, the social-emotional issues that they're suffering, along with challenges of reading and literacy, how can we ever expect young people to succeed, even if we go out and do robotics programs or these after-school programs, when they have a very difficult time with some of the toughest challenges that they're building at home? So, I think, you know, the, it's the issue that we have to do both, and we have to figure out how we're going to do both, because if not, the cost is high, the consequences are high. We've seen it. And, you know, Dr. Gravenberg, who works with the Hawk Institute, I know he intervened in my life, too. And I would say that if we, you know, there will be a cost now, or even greater cost later, but the return, if we invest now, is even much more than we could ever even imagine. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I do want to say a couple on the recommendations. The two-year planning, or trying to figure out how do we look at grants so that they can have more stability, and they're not chasing the dollar every fiscal year, is important. Right now, the libraries and even literacy programs and lunch programs, we know that during the summertime, those are critical issues where kids fall behind on their reading, they don't have places to eat. So, I think on the recommendations, figuring out our funding cycle so that we can bridge the gap during that summertime, even though I know Sac Unified is changing their schedule a little bit, that's still, I think, an area where I think, the two things if I said, focus on is longer-term investment, and so there, we're not chasing the money. And then, two, figuring out how we bridge the gap so that issues in the summertime can be addressed.
Thank you. Councilman Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Khalid and staff, and folks that have come out to talk about the wonderful things that are happening in their programs and in their lives. And I also just want to send a special shout-out to Omar, and as a living example of people who came from two opposite neighborhoods or competing neighborhoods as kids. Omar and I played on a high school basketball team together. He was from Burbank, or I think John Steele Junior High School at the time, and I was at Del Paso Junior High. And a program like this brought us together for a summer when we were 13, 14-years-old. And from that, we forged a friendship that has lasted us a lifetime. And I've seen the work that Omar's been doing over the years, and have been very proud to see how he has really been an example, somebody who was, who went through the program like some of you, but then also started his own program to really reach back and help. Because some of the guys we played with, you know, went in different directions. And, and so, you know, really, I just want to say, Omar, keep up the good work, as well as all of you that are doing this wonderful, wonderful stuff, so, and helping the young people in our community. Khalid, you know, big thumbs up to you as well. So, congratulations.
Thank you very much. And before I turn it over to Councilmember Jennings for the last word, I just, to say thank you as well. And, you know, the thing is, we know what works. We know what works. It's our job to find ways to expand what we know works, because for every young person you're serving and saving, there are many that you can't. So, that's our job, to partner with the community-based organizations so that we can do more. And we will. Last word.
Mayor, I want to start off just by thanking the youth who got up on the microphone and were brave enough to speak to us and talk to us for their heart. I think if you were watching what I was watching, you saw how articulate they were, how strong they were in their presentation, and how meaningful it was to them and also to all of us. of us. And so, give my kids a big round of applause that are still here. And then to the community-based organizations who sat through this long meeting, for us to put you all the way at the end, I apologize, that will never happen again, I'll move you up closer to the front, but to you who are doing the work every single day to impact the youth that you serve. At some point in time in all of our lives, an organization or an individual changed the direction that we were going, and because they were there at that point in time and our paths crossed, that direction changed for the better. And that's what you're doing, the community-based organizations, you're helping these kids to find the greatness within them. You're helping to make a difference in their lives, and you're helping to set their course for what they will become in life. And I've seen it at every single venue with each and every one of you, whatever it is that you specialize in, the kids have found you and you have found the kids, and now you're taking them to greatness. And because of that, we're seeing increase in attendance, we're seeing grade point averages go up, we're seeing unacceptable behavior be eliminated, we're seeing all kinds of things that we want to see and the negative things that we don't want to see go away. So I thank the CBOs for all the work that they're doing. I can't thank you enough for being here and the work that you're doing in our community. Just a couple of things I want to let you know, Councilmembers. The statistics that Dr. Newberger said presented to us shows that we are impacting 3,993 youth participants. What that means is, that means of the 21 agencies that we're working with, that's about 190 youth per agency. If you want to look at numbers and make that calculator work, it's $375 per youth. It's nothing, and as you said, you can either invest now or you're going to invest a whole lot later to bring that child back to where it is that we want to bring them back to. Here's the thing that I really want to make sure that all of us understand. We gave out about $1 million in funding to 21 agencies. There was $4 million that was requested, so we could not fund the other three millions because we don't have that kind of money. There were 21 agencies that were funded, there were 45 agencies that we had to turn So when you start thinking about the capacity of building capacity, not only should we build a capacity of the 21 agencies that we're working with, but we ought to talk about building the capacity of all these agencies who do work in this field of gang intervention and prevention, and make sure that they can help us to continue to increase the numbers that we saw today. So I really want to spend just a minute to say thank you to Khalid. I can't thank you enough for coming back to Sacramento. I know you had some questions about whether or not we would quit on you again, and I assured you that we would not, and I'm a man of my word, so I will do everything I can to keep this program moving forward, this movement moving forward, because I don't want to call it a program. This is a movement, and I want to make sure that you're leading it all the time. And Dr. Newberger, I want to thank you as well, because you've given our program some validity to be able to look at the results of what we're doing, the outcomes that we're trying to reach, and I appreciate you for doing that because all of us saw things that are very encouraging in your report, so I thank you so much. I think the next thing I just want to focus on is, and this is probably to the city manager, there were like four requests that we talked about, extending the grant cycle. So it's not a one-year grant cycle, but it's a two-year grant cycle, and all of us in the nonprofit world know that when you have to chase the money every single year, you're less effective than if you can be on a two-year or a three-year grant cycle. And so we need to talk about how do we make that happen, and so that's one of the things that we need to talk about and then bring back to the council so that they can agree that that's the right thing to do and to make that kind of a commitment. And then I think what's real easy within that extension of the grant cycle is to have more flexibility in the start dates so that we can make sure that the summertime is taken care of and other times of when they can start or when they want to start can be reached as well. So I think that's a pretty easy one in our current contract. And then the community-based organizations who serve gang-impacted youth and families, that was another recommendation. And the last recommendation is to build the CBO, Community-Based Organizations, capacity. And I know that we're working hard on trying to bring additional revenues in, they can help us to do that, but they have a lot more potential if we can help them to build more capacity. And so I want to talk about with the city manager about those four things that were recommendations and then bring that back to the council for full approval, once we can come up with some ideas of how we move that forward and what makes business sense, okay? But I want to thank all of you for being here today and for this wonderful presentation. This is something that I'm very proud to lead and to be involved in, and it gives me great joy to know that I have a team of people who are working in the same direction. The 21 partners who we work with this year, you are the greatest team that's making a difference in the city of Sacramento, and I'll fight with you any day of the week. So again, thank you.
Great job. Great job, man. Thank you to everybody. Really, great way to end the meeting. That is our agenda for this evening. Are there council ideas or questions before we adjourn? Councilman Carr?
Thank you, Mayor. Howard, I think it's for you, it could be for the city clerk. I am interested in options on increasing the number of cannabis dispensaries that we have. We started with 30, I believe, and those people have a virtual monopoly, and some of them have not been using their permits, so I am interested in looking at the options. I'm not looking for a full staff report or a, something that's gone through Law &amp; Ledge already. I want to get the sense of the council if we want to do this, and if we do, how many do we want to increase it by, or if not, do nothing. And then depending on that decision, then we can draft up something and send it to Law &amp; Ledge.
Very good. Public comment was at the very beginning of the meeting, it's not the end. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. Got a couple of announcements here. Pops in the Park starts this Saturday, June 2nd. The first performance will be at East Portal Park with the band Idea Team. The Food and Beer Garden starts at 5:00 PM and then the concert goes from 6 till 9:00. At the same time, the Greenhouse is putting on their annual Kids at Heart event, that'll be at the Sacopolis Galleria, starts at 6 o'clock and ends at 9:00. Such a great program for the kids up in South Natomas. We're going to have a community meeting on Monday, June 4th regarding the art for Fire Station 15. It will be held at 6 to 8:00 PM at the South Natomas Community Center, 2921 Truxell Road. And next Friday, June 8th, is the Last Food Truck Mania at McKinley Park this year from 5 to 8:00 PM. The following month, the food truck event moves to Glen Hall Park on July 13th.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Chenier?
Thank you, Mayor. Really quickly, we have our Oak Park Peace Walk Friday night. We're this month at a Shiloh Baptist Church. On Friday night also, we're doing food trucks at Belle Coolidge Park from 5 to 8:00 PM. We have a couple of special guests. Front Street Animal Shelter will be coming with their very adorable pets. And then also Fairy Tale Town Pop-Up Adventure Play Program. On Saturday, June 2nd, it's the Black Book Fair in Oak Park. That'll be at the Women's Civic Improvement Center, and also they'll have a Kid Zone at Brick House Art Gallery. Look forward to seeing you there.
Very good. Councilmember Gueda?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First, I do want to thank you again and Councilmember Chenier for going to the inaugural of the vote centers. And so for those folks out there who still have questions about voting or voter registration, you can go to any vote center in the county and register to vote and vote on the same day.
Yep.
And so a couple of announcements here. The Second Annual Lego League Junior Exposition, this is the District 6 project that we put together. We started three after-school robotics programs at Tahoe, Earl Warren, and also Mark Twain, and they're doing their expo at 10:00 AM over at the district office, at the Sac City Unified District Office at 5735 47th Avenue, if you want to come check it out. You heard a little bit about earlier during public comment, the Father's Day Market, the Upcycle Pop-Up, that's going to be on Saturday, June 9th, from noon to 6:00 PM at 7300 Folsom Boulevard, that's 7300 Folsom.
Excuse me, Councilmember Gueda. Mr. Clark?
Yes, sir.
The public testimony is at the beginning of the meeting, this is the close of the meeting and the council members are talking.
Without him seeing me, it's been at the end.
No, you're gonna, you're gonna have to leave, sir.
I just sent you out Starbucks, right?
You're gonna...
You sit next to me at Starbucks and you ask me what I want, right?
Okay. You are disrupting the meeting again every time you come in here, and so I'm going to ask you to leave. Can you leave?
I'm gonna get my meat. Snap on Clark. Remove that A.A. Snap on Clark.
Please continue.
Okay, well, we have Fire Station Open House on Saturday, June 16th, from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM, and this is out in the Fruit Ridge Manor area at 5642 66th Street. Come out and get to know your local firefighters over out there on Fruit Ridge, in the Phantom Room, Fruit Ridge Manor neighborhood. And with that, Mr. Mayor, a lot of good stuff, a lot of great work, and a lot of good people.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Councilman Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. This Friday, June 1st, is the District 7 Movie Night, and it's going to take place at Mesa Grande Park. It begins at dusk, and we want you to come down with your family and friends to enjoy the movie entitled Black Panther, right? So we're excited about this. You get free popcorn, you get free drinks, I'll give you a glow stick so you don't get lost in the dark, and this is a great time, so if you need more information, contact my office at area code 916-808-7007, but we hope to see 500-plus people out this Friday night at Mesa Grande Park for the movie Black Panther. Okay, and just a reminder, 4th of July is fast approaching, and if you'd like to participate in the District 7 4th of July Parade Festival or Pet Pageant, please email yvette@yvettecumbellin@cityofsacramento.org or call our office at area code 916-808-7007. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of announcements. One, I want to say we had a successful community meeting focused on housing in District 2, and it was supported by members of city staff, and I wanted to thank them, they're not here, obviously, but there were a number of people that came out, Emily Howcomb, Carl Simpson, LaShail Dozier, and several other people came out that were housing specialists and answered a bunch of questions and talked about a variety of things. I do want to say that, Mr. Mayor, the winter triage, I think, was, came up, and there were some very positive things that were said about it, so I think it's starting to take hold. So the second thing I'd like to mention is that, and I had said this some time ago, when Councilman Steve Kohn used to sit next to me, that District 2 had the first taco festival in the city's history, and some, I forgot who it was, somebody challenged me though and said, "That wasn't the first taco festival." But let me just say that the 5th Annual Taco Festival will be held this Saturday in District 2. It will be loads of fun. The mayor came out last year.
And I'm going to be out of town.
That's all right.
I'll be there.
But you guys are all welcome to come out. Susanna will be there. It's going to be, it starts at 10:30 and it'll go until 6:30 PM. There's going to be a Chihuahua contest, fashion show contest, they got a taco eating contest where they're going to see who can eat the most tacos, but it should be a lot of fun, you guys. Come out and check it out, even if you just come out and have lunch and spend a little time, so look forward to seeing you at the Taco Festival this Saturday, 10:30 to 6:30. It'll be on Del Paso Boulevard in between Arden and El Camino. Thank you.
Good deal. Thank you so much. Last but not least, Councilmember Ashby.
Thanks, Mayor. The just, the Taco Festival is so fun, and the Chihuahua Fashion Show is hilarious. Have you gone before, Eric? You're going to have so much fun.
Eric is a sponsor with me this year.
Oh, you're sponsoring this year?
I forgot to mention it, he's a co-sponsor.
Okay, you're going to have so much fun.
We'll be there eating a lot of tacos, you know?
Yeah. It'll be so cool. That's a really, that's really a fun event. So in North Natomas, last year, we started these events called First Fridays, and bring out a band, it's the Sugar High Band, and then Track 7 does a beer garden with us, and we have a lot of vendors and a whole bunch of food trucks, and it's a good time, so, and I think, Councilmember Jennings, if somebody was so motivated, they could make it to both of our events, because ours starts at 6:00 and it kind of winds down as it gets dark, and you're showing a movie, so then they could kind of head over to yours at dark and see Black Panther. But if you want to come out to the North Natomas Regional Park on Friday and enjoy our First Friday event, they are a ton of fun. Mayor, if you're in town, you should drop by. And then I think I'm going to sub in for Councilmember Harris this weekend on Saturday at the Greenhouse event that he mentioned, which is fantastic if you guys are looking for something fun to do on Saturday night. The Greenhouse in Councilmember Harris' district, and they love him deeply, is such a great program. We both think they're terrific, and they have this really fun thing they do, and Jeff, I don't even know if I told you this yet, but they auction off cakes at the end of the dinner.
Oh, yeah. You're going to throw down big time.
Yeah, and I'm a horrible auctioneer, but I'm going to be the cake auctioneer this year, so you should definitely come, because that'll probably be a disaster. So, but fun. And then after you eat a bunch of cake, then the next morning is the Women's Kaiser Fitness Festival Run, so good luck to all of us this weekend. All right.
I just, I got to say, just love hearing all the incredible things going on in your districts and throughout our city. I mean, it's just, it's alive, and now that the weather's, you know, nice, and look forward to just a great continued spring and summer of, you know, fun and happy things for our communities to do. Try to get to as many of them as I can. Thank you very much, everyone, we're adjourned. Thank you.